All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll call the meeting to order. And we stand for the Gary, you want to lead us?
Ready to salute. I will begin to salute the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, thank you for this day. God, God, thank you that we can come together and do the county business here. God, God, that you would just give each and every one of us the wisdom that we need to take care of this. And God, that your hand would be upon each and every one of our staff members. God, God, that you would just guide them and direct them and and just keep them safe and throughout the day, God, and bring them back home safely to their families. And I pray this in the wonderful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
We had an informal session today. So number two, agenda approval, additions or deletion?
We're making most things. They still be agenda student. My second is.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Bridges, second by Supervisor Scanlon. If anybody from the public want to comment on it? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Is there any public comment or items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll comment. Unadgedised reports by board members. Do you want to start us off?
Sure. Last Wednesday, we, James DeOssie and I got the two rooms ready for USDA inspection to further our South County food distribution with Doyle seniors. I met with the solar project guy. This guy is proposing 20 megawatts with battery energy storage systems that will help with Elmud's energy resilience. He's met with Nick Dominguez and he'll be meeting with the planning department soon. Last night, we attended the Doyle Firewise meeting. We're getting our hours together to keep our Firewise certifications. This Saturday is Hurlong football. First home game. This will be the fourth year I'm calling the game in the booth and coming from undefeated season last year to a bunch of ninth and 10th graders. Westwood just gave us a black eye to scrimmage last week, so it's going to be a rough year for the Hurlong Vikings, but hopefully we'll end up doing okay. Over the weekend, I attended the end of the year lavender festival out at the Wisers and it was nice to see Holling Dog Ranch and everybody out there as well. Even in the pouring down rain, it was good to see over 200 people in the community support that event, so that was nice. Last Thursday, I attended the FCI Hurlong Community Breakfast. It was nice to see the LCOE always in attendance of all the good stuff. They send out their rock stars to all the events, so that was a good breakfast. Tomorrow night, we're going to have our CR Alliance meeting and the runway guys are flying in and they're going to have a good presentation on the 737, 757 Boeing Restoration Project. Also, the Hip Hill fundraiser. Over the weekend, I picked up 83 pounds of tri tips and Fran, Nancy and Jeff have done so much for the community. The least we could do is rally behind it. September 6, we're going to be doing a tri tip drive-through fundraiser. Chief Jimmy Arubry is going to make his award-winning alley cat chili. And just, they did have insurance, but a perfect example of where they're going to have their shortfalls is Nancy's 2012 SUV. Insurance isn't going to pay much for that and they're going to have to replace that amongst a bunch of other things that insurance is not good for. So please mark your calendars. September 6, we'll be out there and hopefully we can sell 300 plates. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to start off by enjoying the medium day of memory of Gerta Elsie, who was my secretary to high school way back in the day. Anyway, she passed away, so anyway, I couldn't have her. Um, you know, I had a thought, you know, there's we, she was middle ramp park, you know, we have very well known for our biking trails, our hiking trails. And I think we can coordinate that with the Cal Fire and Forest Service and Daleman for the fire trail for fire breaks. I think that might be a good opportunity to work with that there to maybe coordinate and get some more money for, to do some of that stuff in conjunction with the other agencies to help protect what we have. It's just an odd idea, but I had to run that upstairs and if there was any opportunity for that as we move forward. Let's see. Also, the USDA, they extended the comment period for the restructuring of the Forest Service. They're looking to get rid of the region six and so the western region would be based out of Utah. So instead of, you know, Vacaville would be in Utah for the whole western region. It could even be in Colorado, who knows? So they're looking at restructuring, saying, well, we might want to put a comment letter together on that. What's some of our concerns? I was looking at it and I was putting up for certain spaces. Might be an opportunity there. Is there a look at restructure now? Uh, last week, I attended the Modoc District Fair up in Cedarville. The kids showed their fair animals up there. It was a nice, nice little fair. And then, of course, this week here, this weekend is Cedar Mountain Fair over in the park there. So if anyone wants to go there, so you can go there. And I want to welcome all the kids back to school and just be careful if you're driving around the streets, you know, with kids going to school, coming out from school, just be aware of them. And other than that, I think that's about all I have.
Start. Thank you. Let's see.
Alan? Sure. Um, last Tuesday, I attended the Hunter Lake Valley Recreation Authority meeting, pool meeting. And kind of business casual there. And then the following Wednesday, the 20th, I attended the Alaskan County Sheriff's military equipment display and discovered that in the last four or five years, the only people that have attended have been up on this board. The public doesn't have a whole lot of interest in it. Although my kids did very much enjoy time with the MRAP. Anyway, I also attended on the following Thursday, the Fish and Game Commission. And I met with prospective fair board members on Friday, the 22nd. I met with the third fleet community service district members regarding some serious issues that are happening. And that was it.
Thanks. Here. Okay, let's see. On the 21st, I attended the public health prioritizing process for the 2025 community health assessment. There's probably about 50, 55 people there altogether. It was pretty interesting meeting. On the 25th, which was yesterday, I attended the first five meeting and every name's going very well there. Tomorrow, I leave for Anderson. The next day, I have a Nortech Board of Directors meeting. And let's see, I go back for another Nortech meeting, September 5th, and that's for the executive committee. So that's about it.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I also attended the, the pool meeting last week and and we're still taking applications for for the general public citizen representative. Thank you. And so if anybody's interested in holding on that seat, we're still taking applications. And so, and that was, that was all the that I had.
How long was that term for?
Um, it will well, I believe it's for two more years. But if you called Mr. Goodman, you would get that for sure. But that's, that's what my memory takes. So
You better call quick. He's just about out the door.
Yeah. Yes. Yes, and we're, we're, you know, we're the city's losing Bob. He's getting to go into retirement life. And so, you know, it's going to be a big loss for this community. He's, he's served the city and, and county residents well. It is going to move on to step one. And so on, on that one there, I thought that that for the vacancies that were in District Five, that we were going to wait until September 9 is what I remember us voting on. And so um, I just don't know if
That was, you know, that was a question.
Yeah.
Jason, I guess you'll
And, and we, and we all and there was five of us and we voted five.
Three, two.
Three to two?
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we don't have to wait though.
Okay. If the board's happy with moving on, then I'm happy that we're doing it.
Right on.
And so okay, so
Well, I've got two nominees that I'd like to put forward to the board as well. I think you guys got the applications probably this morning or these are guys that I know very well. Ronnie, Ronnie Mahensky is one of them. He's been on the fair board in the past. He's also removed himself from the board and then still volunteered at the fair and helping Jim O'Cop when he was, when he was there. He's a hardworking man. His knowledge of how all that stuff operates would be a real asset to the fair advisory board. And then another man, Jerry Sandall is a good friend of Ronnie Mahensky, but also a good friend to me. And I know him very well. And so I know these guys have both worked well together and worked well with the existing board. And so I think that they'd be a definite asset to the entire program. And they have, they both volunteer for stuff in the community in our, in our church. And, and spend a lot of time just really giving of themselves. And so they, they would go into the job with a spirit of volunteerism. And that would contribute anything in return. You know, they just want to help and, and improve our community in general, but also include the fair. And so I think that Bill would be just blown away when he sees these guys in action. So, oh. Anyway, so I put four of those two names, Ronnie Mahensky and Jerry Sandall.
Do you have two open seats?
Yes. I'm open to pick that today.
I, I know one of the guys drew well, that's Ronnie. And you're very fortunate to have Kid Munger as your appointee. He's quite a man, so he's been on the fair board numerous years. I've known him as a friend. Very talented, very dedicated, so good job.
Do I need to make a separate motion for each of them or kind of just do them both at one time?
Can do.
And I would second his motion. I've worked on it with Lonnie over the fair over the years, background is on the fair advisory board, like you said, he's just a
I make a motion then.
You already have.
He's seconded.
Okay. So um, so the other two applicants, do we?
We'll do that.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion made by Supervisor Scanlon. A second by Supervisor Abba. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Hey. Seeing none, I will bring it back up here and and when I was on the fair board, I I worked with Lonnie and, and he knows exactly what he's getting back into. And so he he's very knowledgeable and, and a good man. And I also worked with I've worked with, I've worked with Jerry at at the prison and and on different projects and, and I can't say enough about him too. So with that, all those in favor of those two applicants?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Now, Mr. Chairman, before we go into further, we have a couple more applicants for District Five. And I would like to nominate Morgan Wimpel. You know, I called her last year and said, well, Wimpel's pumpkin patch be wanting to come down to Horticulture Day and plant some pumpkin seeds with all the poor age kids. And she didn't even blink. They, they came right in, jumped right in. And everybody knows how instrumental Wimpel's pumpkin patch is for District Five and all of Alson County as well. I had given my word to my the best fair board pick in my opinion, Timocho Turina, that I would keep that seat vacant for a while. And I don't think he's coming back. So, you know, at this point, I would like to nominate Morgan Wimpel for the District Five Open Fair Board vacancy.
No, seconded. A motion made by Supervisor Ingram. And second by Supervisor Bridges. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on that? Okay. Um, I'll bring it back up here and
One thing before we go.
Yeah.
You know, it is you know, thank you, Morgan, again for being here. And Bill, if you can reach out to the other ones to remind everybody that the next meeting is going to be September 9, so they can they can be there.
Absolutely. Have your full form.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay, and and once again, I have known Morgan since she was little. And she's grown up into a very great woman. And so I you know, I think that she's going to be a great asset to the fair. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you, Dylan.
Well, congratulations, guys.
Okay, we are going to move to G. And there anybody?
I'd like to pick three.
Number three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, for power.
Second.
Okay. Um, so we got, what? Uh, no. We got my first and the answer, but okay, so I have a motion on the floor to do the balance. Did, do the balance?
Yeah, two, one, two, two.
Okay. Supervisor Abba made that. Supervisor Bridges seconded. Is there anybody from the public who want to comment on? Hey. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion passing.
Let me ask that you speak up louder. We cannot hear you and you're not using your mics.
Okay. Is this, is it allowed in that voice?
Yeah.
Okay. You got it. All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir. Only reason I pulled G3 just a while back, the Allied for Workforce Development folks came and did a presentation and they offered to help pay for some of our Class A drivers training. So I'm just curious if they have a role in that or not?
The answer is no.
The answer is no. Okay.
I checked in with them and didn't get a lot of responsiveness to that. So I had one of our folks check in on it. See if that was something you could tap into.
Right, just remember them presenting to the board. They were somehow on that one. We checked and they don't. All right, I just wanted to, just wanted to say, thanks, Ben.
What's the expense and time frame now to get a Class A?
The what timeframe?
The expense and the timeframe to go through your school and then to get comfortableized.
So you have to get your initial permit. That's on the permit team to do that. We try to get them some training, by the way, that's going to go to the school and stuff. So the school, the pricing is in it's about three days for them to go through that class. So it's a short version. If we just send them to the class, it would be longer if we didn't get some of the training in-house with them. So they do two days of classroom bookwork, stop and see driving, and then their day, they flip tests. And it's roughly $3,500 to $4,000, depending on, you know, room and board as well, who have to put them up and ready.
And what's to stop somebody from going through this and getting a Class A and then just jumping ship and taking our money and going elsewhere? You think we got?
Nothing. And I believe if you recall our solid waste discussion a while ago, one of our employees through that process as well, there is nothing to stop too. It's no different than the county putting an employee through post-training and then deciding to go work for another agency. So it's at our risk. But that's where we're at.
One more question. Can this guy speak English and read English so we're not?
Don't remain in. Okay. Is there any other questions? Okay, we need a motion.
I move that we authorize the travel, lodging and spending for a road equipment operator to attend Zippy's Truck School.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion made by Supervisor Abba, second by Supervisor Ingram. Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wait.
We are going to move on to H1. Auditor, Controller, Tax Collector. Nancy.
Morning, Lord. Your name and I'm Lori Shaw. I have given you my attachment of some of the things that I would like to go over this morning since I am announcing my retirement as of October 31, 2025. And in doing such, I wanted to give an update of where the office has been, where we're going and where it needs to continue to get to. So the first thing in the packet is I just printed the newspaper article from the Alson County Times. It's just a really good, quick look at all of the grand jury's recommendations and all of them. That just does a quick reference for everybody if you would like that. And then moving right on, when the grand jury report came, I don't remember this going in a public session because I don't remember coming and talking to you guys about it and about the changes in the auditor's office. The report of the Audit and Finance Committee on the matters of the Auditor Controller's Office. So I kind of wanted just to go through that with you today because I think it says a lot about what's happened in that office and where we are today. So if I could go through my presentation and then take questions and Patty, I asked Patty Gunderson, Superintendent of Schools, also becomes part of my presentation and explain to the board how the offices affect the schools as well.
We should.
Oh, sorry. The grand jury report now.
Okay, thank you.
And it starts with the auditors. I gave you the entire report, but on page 25 is where the report of the Audit and Finance Committee on matters of the Alson County Auditor begins. And I just thought for general history, I would read this page to you because everybody always tells me, we don't really know what you do. And this page gives a very good definition of what those two offices do. The Office of the Alson County Auditor Controller has experienced a series of setbacks. First, the transition of the Alson County's electronic payroll system was not handled well upon retirement of the incumbent auditor controllers, resulting in incorrect employee paychecks, missed Internal Revenue Service payroll tax payments and incorrect deductions of the California State Public Employees Retirement System, CAL-PERS. Following this, the countywide election of 2023 left the audit, left the Office of the Auditor. Oh, I'm sorry. I see Sam looking at me. When my office copied it, they did front and back. Did I not copy it? Was it not copy right?
I've got it.
You got it?
It's, it's just, you got to scroll to find the pages.
Okay, okay, sorry. Following this, the countywide election of 2023 left the Office of the Auditor Controller vacant. This left the office in free fall and caused impulsive actions by the Alson County Board of Supervisors in an attempt to right the ship. The Board of Supervisors attempted unsuccessfully to attract a qualified person to appoint to the office. The Board of Supervisors then acted to combine the Auditor Controller's Office with the Treasurer's Office, which is currently operating effectively. Ms. Cardenas does plan to retire after her term expires in December of 2026. The Board of Supervisors also placed the question of combining the two offices and appointing the previous elected Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector as a Finance Director. The plan proved very unpopular with Alson County voters. And during this past 2024 election held in March, so the Board of Supervisors took the voter's advisory and will mandate the separation of the combined offices in January 2027 after the election in June 2026. And then background, in Alson County, the Auditor Controller is an independent, nonpartisan elected office established to provide various accounting and property tax administration services to the county, special districts, schools and cities. The Auditor Controller is also required to conduct an annual external audit of Alson County in its special districts. Like most other California general law counties, Alson County has combined the Office of the Auditor, Auditor with the Office of the County Controller. As such, a California County Auditor Controller serves as the Chief Accounting Officer of the county. The County Treasurer's Office serves as a depository for all of the funds belonging to the county, schools and other special districts within each county. The Treasurer receives deposits and managed investments for county funds generated from taxes, fees, grants and bond proceeds. In addition, the Treasurer is the principal in the issuance of county debt obligation. And contracts that support a variety of construction projects and other county financing needs. In Lassen County, as in most California counties, the Office of the Treasurer is combined with the Office of the Tax Collector. The Tax Collector's role is to administer the billing, collection and reporting of property taxes revenues levied annually throughout California. For not only the county, but also city, schools and special districts. And as with the Auditor Controller, the Lassen County Treasurer Tax Collector's Office is an independent, nonpartisan elected office. And then on page twenty six, there was only one sentence that I want to read under the discussion and it said. Public office is a public trust. Elected officials serve the people. And I I just wanted to point out that I truly and wholeheartedly believe in that, that elected officials serve the people. Um, then if we go on to page twenty seven. I thought I would just go over some of the succession problems that happened occurred in the auditor's office to put us to where we are today. In twenty fourteen, Diana Wimpel wins the election for the Lassen County Auditor. In June two thousand eighteen, as the incumbent Diana Wimpel wins reelection as the county auditor and she runs unopposed. Myself also won reelection to the Office of Treasurer, Tax Collector and also ran unopposed. In early twenty twenty, Diana Wimpel, with three years remaining in her term of office, announced her retirement effective March thirty first, twenty twenty. California law does not provide for special elections for elected county level officials, but it does provide county boards supervisors with the authority to appoint a qualified individual to the remainder. Of the unfilled elective term. So C A O Richard Egan and the Lassen County Board of Supervisors acted hastily to fill the vacancy. Lassen County C A O Egan advises the Board of Supervisors to interview three candidates for appointment to Auditor Controller. At the March tenth, twenty twenty Board of Supervisors meetings. Supervisors met three candidates for County Auditor Controller. And per the minutes of the March seventeenth, twenty twenty Board of Supervisors meeting. During a closed session, Julie Morgan was selected as a Lassen County Auditor Controller designateee by unanimous vote. I'd like to make a comment here. Um, these. Um. Interviews were held in open session at that time. And the other two candidates that were available for the board to choose from at that time was Taya Short, who was the accountant auditor in the auditor's office. Who is now my Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector in the Tax Collector's Office. And Lori Pierce, who was currently the Assistant Auditor Controller. As well, as well as Julie Morgan, who was the county's budget analyst at the time. At the twenty four March twenty twenty Lassen County Board of Supervisors meeting, the Board of Supervisors recognized the service of Diana Wimpel on her retirement. Effective March thirty first, twenty twenty, and the board officially announces the appointment of Julie Morgan. As Lassen County Auditor Controller effective April first, twenty twenty. And then if we move down, uh, March twenty twenty two is the application deadline. For even year statewide primary elections to be held, January, June seventh, twenty twenty two. The county recorder receives no filings to run for the Office of the County Controller. This office would become vacant. Once Julie Morgan's appointed term was scheduled to run out in December of twenty twenty three. The incumbent Auditor Controller Morgan did, could not be reappointed and chose not to run. To this news, the C A O and the Board of Supervisors attempted again to find a suitable applicant for the next term by announcing the job on the county's website. Of the two applicants for the position, neither was found to have minimal level of experience and qualifications to serve. During the June twenty twenty two election, there were five hundred and twenty eight write-in votes for County Auditor Controller. The appointed County Auditor Controller Morgan continues to serve. Nancy Cardenas wins election to the Office of Treasurer, Tax Collector, running unopposed with ninety eight point nine eight percent. In the countywide of elect, in the countywide election of twenty twenty, there were eight races for eight office offices. These races attracted a total of twelve candidates. One and a half persons running for any office on average. And the auditor's race attracting exactly zero. This situation is endemic and persistent over Lassen County history. In January twenty twenty three, newly elected county officers are sworn in. Auditor Morgan becomes ineligible to serve further and is officially removed from office. So the Office of the Auditor Controller becomes vacant once again. There was no means for the people to fill the position, special elections not being possible. And no practical means for the Board of Supervisors to temporarily fill the seat. No current qualified county employee wanted to be appointed into the position for the rest of the term. Lassen C A O Egan found a solution by proposing that the Board of Supervisors act to merge the Office of the Auditor Controller. And Treasurer Tax Collector and appoint the incumbent Treasurer Tax Collector Nancy Cardenas to be the Combined Auditor Controller, Treasurer Tax Collector. Effective April twenty third to December twenty twenty six. Lassen Board of Supervisors adopts Resolution twenty three oh two six. The resolution sets the pay grade for the new position of the Treasurer, Tax Collector and Auditor Controller. The annual budget for the salary was increased by twenty thousand dollars to make up for the additional duties as Auditor Controller. But at the same time, save the county money by not paying a second full-time position from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six. And your packet, um, there I I have provided you with a copy of two resolutions. One was the first resolution before the election, um, when I was appointed in April, that was the um. Emergency resolution and then the other one was the one that came back after the election. Um, to the board that I am currently holding these offices under. As they follow up to the plan, C A O Egan placed recommendations for Measure T and U before the Board of Supervisors. To make the four county offices into a single finance department. Yes. Uh, single board appointed director of finance. All of this is permitted under the statutes studied and referenced by the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, Measures T and U, we're still on page twenty nine, sorry. Measures T and U were placed on the ballot and were voted down by the voters in March twenty twenty four. Lassen County voters soundly defeated both measures. Measure T only had. One thousand four hundred and fifty seven yes votes and five thousand one hundred and fifteen no votes and measure you only had one thousand six hundred and fifty yes votes. And four thousand seven hundred no votes. The sense of the voters was, no, we don't want this merger. And if the offices need to be merged, we don't want the Board of Supervisors appointing the office holder. They were advisory measures, so the Board of Supervisors was still free to act. As of this writing, the Board of Supervisors has voted to break up the newly combined office. In twenty twenty seven, as Nancy Cardenas retires at the end of her term in December of twenty twenty six. The impacts are huge without an auditor. The county cannot run effectively without an auditor. Every county transaction begins and ends in the auditor's office. If this position is not elected, it is not serving the people of the county. If this position is appointed, they would serve the Board of Supervisors or the C A O. With the risk of no transparency on the status of Lassen County funds. Um, and then if we can go to. Page thirty. Software transition issues. AKA Tyler. Um. On April twelfth, two thousand eighteen, then County Auditor Controller Diana Wimpel. Issues and requests for proposal for E R P solution and implementation, implementation services. To replace obsolete and dilapidated software for financial reporting. Proposals were due by May thirty first, two thousand and eighteen. Response proposals were received by the Board of Supervisors, Lassen County Auditor Diana Wimpel and C A O Richard Egan. In early June, two thousand eighteen, and did not involve the I T department. And the choosing of a vendor during the contracting portion of the process. Nor involve I T in the transition of the new software to replace the old system. The contract for E R P solutions and implementation services is awarded to Tyler Software Solutions of Plano, Texas, Texas. The software order offered to the Auditor Controller's Office is called Munis. Tyler Software has four other contracts with the Lassen County Government. Two in the Sheriff's Office and two in the Office of the County Clerk. The contract includes licenses for the software plus support in the form of training for county employees. Under the newly appointed Auditor Controller Morgan, the Munis software package proves to be difficult to use for the auditor's office. At this point, the I T department has not been involved in the difficult software transition. And the auditor's office was trying to manage this application on their own. Many processes had to be done by hand. Paychecks became inaccurate. I R S tax payments were made late. CalPERS retirement contributions were late and or inaccurate. Late charges reached eighty thousand dollars. However, they were later negotiated down to ten thousand two hundred dollars for CalPERS. And seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents for the I R S. And classes meant to train employees were unattended by office staff and not enforced. And then also I gave you a handout with some other things that have come to pass. Um. Since I have been Auditor Controller, but still going back. Um, to the twenty twenty two year and. One of them is, um. Ten ninety five health forms. You're going to see a bill. For two hundred and seventy seven thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty nine cents. And this was for failure to have ten ninety five health forms. Sent out and uploaded to the I R S for the, for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. When we received this back in June, we immediately got on the phone with the I R S. They gave us sixty days. Our sixty days was up August eighteenth of twenty twenty five. To work with them to see if we could get these penalties waived. Ms. Heranik was able to work with Tyler to get these forms built. Or to get these forms put into Tyler for that year. And since they were not, they were never incorporated in Tyler and never built in Tyler. So we, she was able to do that. We were able to work with the I R S to get the forms uploaded. Onto their website and we did fiscal years twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. They have received those uploads. They have approved them, but they have not gotten back to us yet whether they are going to waive these penalties. So these are things that come up. That were before I was the auditor, that we're still trying to go back and the discrepancies and fix them. So that the county does not have to pay fines and penalties to the I R S. Um. Currently, we are also going, undergoing an I R S audit on W nine forms that we submit to the I R S. For each form that they determine is incorrect, they can assess a six hundred dollar penalty. In twenty twenty two, the I R S implemented a W nine database to check the accuracy of W nines we receive in our office. The county was unaware of the database in twenty twenty two and we were actually unaware of the database until they contacted us for this audit. And the W nine information that was provided and submitted to the I R S was incorrect. You will see in your packet a checklist that every department has indicating what the auditor needs to fully complete a contract. I worked with county council to compile this listing. Once all of these things are checked off, the contract is deemed to be complete. And then we can go ahead and put it in the system and pay on it. Number two is a W nine. We are still having issues with departments. Providing us some information for both existing and new contracts. W nines are required to be updated if there are any changes to the name or address of vendors over the life of the contract. If we do not comply with the I R S rules, the penalties can be brutal. We have also had issues with ten ninety nines that were mailed out in twenty twenty two. Thankfully, Ms. Heranik was able to work with Tyler on program updating for that year and new forms were able to be uploaded to the I R S. They accepted those corrections and all fines and penalties were waived.
Nancy, could I ask you where you're at on there? What page number are you on, please?
On thirty.
Okay.
And then I gave you some supporting documents that are in a paperclip.
Thank you.
Um, and then going back to the Tyler update. I came here, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago and I gave a Tyler update. At which time Mr. Neely told me that he was. Um, very upset that all of the modules for Tyler were not. Up and running properly and he told me that's what I had been hired for. So I still disagree with that because I was hired to, for the auditor's office modules and I have no control over personnel. However, Cheyenne Rule was, um. Basically appointed to be the program manager to help all of the different county offices. Implement Tyler and get the changes fixed. And we did hire client first and the board approved a contract for them. For us to work on getting the program up and administered. And so one of the things that I gave you today is the original, um. That timeline of when the H C M. Component of Tyler was supposed to be corrected, implemented and online. We all started this process together in October of twenty twenty three. And if everything would have gone as planned, we all would have ended it. By June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and Tyler would have been fully up and operational on July first of twenty twenty four. Also included in your packet is I asked Cheyenne. Um. To compile a list of why these meetings weren't met. And you know, why is it that the Personnel Office hasn't been able to complete?
Okay.
Um. The implementation and the correction of the Tyler Munis. And so in the email that I have attached, she has gone down for every date. And has given you the reason that those dates, that those meetings were not met. And so I have to tell you that one of my frustrations is that until personnel can finish their portion of correcting. The, um. Human resource management portion of Tyler. We can't further implement electronic payroll in the auditor's office. We're kind of stuck. This has to be done for us to be able to move any further. Um, personnel is not under my purview. I do not, um, have any. Clout in going and saying, you know, I want you to work on this every minute of every day. That would be under your Personnel Director. And your admin. So with that. This and our, and our electronic payroll system, electronic applications, all of that. Are on hold until this part of Tyler can be corrected and implemented for the county. Once this is done, then the auditor's office can move forward with electronic time cards. And that's important because Tyler is not a system that's meant to have people go in. And hand enter anything. It's meant for. Me, well, I don't fill out a time card, but Michelle, to fill out her time card. And submit it to her. Um. Supervisor to approve it and then go to the auditor's office to be put into the system to be paid. That is so that things can't be changed or. It it's a fraud protection that Tyler offers. And so doing, um, paper time card still allows for inaccuracies. People entering time cart, you know, time wrong, pay still not being. You know, paid correctly because sometimes it comes over in the system correctly when personnel closes out and we do changes. Sometimes it doesn't. And so really personnel has to finish this for that system and payroll. Um, to be complete and for us to be able to finish this conversion. It's very, very, very important. And one of the things that unfortunately, um, I'm going to be leaving not complete in in October. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to kind of go through with you is the audits. And I don't know if you all remember, I don't know how many of you were here. But I brought to you when I first came in, there must have been like eight or nine years of audits. That had not been brought to the board. And I brought them to the board and I had Price Page come in. And we tried to go through them and we tried to explain, you know, why this is so important to the county and to all of you. But you know, financial stuff is very dry and, um. It was a lot of information to give you guys in in one meeting. But I think it needs to be said that. Audits going forward should always come to the board once they are completed every year. If you don't see an audit, there's a problem. And you should be asking, you know, where's the audit? What's going on? Why haven't we received it? Um, that didn't happen. And so now we have all of these findings that the grand jury basically came up with. I'm going to start at the, on page thirty at the very end with, um. Fiscal year sixteen seventeen.
Nancy, are we, are we starting right now?
Uh, no, that's the new audit. We're still back to the page thirty of, um, the.
Grand jury.
Grand jury's report, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
At the end of fiscal year sixteen seventeen, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, the independent audit finds fault in the road department's accounting of federal road maintenance grants. The road department had accounted for a road construction grant as if it were cash. The effect was that the funds were not recorded when they were awarded by accrual, but when they were received like cash. This resulted in an understatement of revenue of six hundred and seventy eight thousand eight hundred and sixty five dollars. The external independent auditor recommended that the county bookkeeping be done on a cash basis, or not on a cash basis, but on a modified accrual basis required by the federal government in response to the deficiencies. Then County Auditor Controller Wimpel promises to work with the County Road Department to ensure proper accounting of federal roads and grant funding. Completion is promised for the two thousand eight, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year audit. Then Auditor Controller Wimpel replied to the audit by submitting a corrective action plan. And going forward, I'm just gonna say cap. And when I say cap, that's a corrective action plan for an audit, which specified additional staff training and grants accounting for the road department. This action was deemed acceptable, and the single audit for two thousand eighteen again showed no material weaknesses. The low risk auditee status was unchanged, and the county lost nothing other than a little staff training. The next external audit for fiscal year eighteen nineteen revealed the onset of deep problems for the Office of the Auditor Controller. The external auditor found two material weaknesses in Lassen County's financial statement for that fiscal year. First, the audit uncovered the leftover previous year funding for mental health realignment, social services realignment, and public health realignment was used to cover a budget deficit. And the amounts used for this, when added to the amounts used in previous years, was building up. The auditor noted that this material weakness was due to lack of any mechanism to distinguish which funds were applicable to that purpose and that this could lead to possible misuse of those funds. Second, the external independent auditor found that the county had failed to properly account for revenue received after it had been made available, a technical ignorance from generally accepted government accounting standards. The external auditor faulted the county's end of year fiscal closing process for failing to pick up the air. The result was an overstatement of forty four thousand four hundred and ninety three dollars for Health and Social Services and one million twenty three thousand forty three dollars for welfare administration. It must be noted here, we're on page thirty two. It must be noted here that any corrective action plan cap to the annual external audit is the responsibility of the County Auditor Controller. The cap continued in the public, the cap contained in the publicly available single audit report is signed by Auditor Controller Julie Morgan, who assumed office first two thousand twenty. This cap has no date, but for the completion date specifies the next twelve months. This single audit report was therefore a wake-up call, but the county retained its status as low risk auditee and could still be said to be in good standing. The county was, however, unnoticed. The downward spiral continued in the next external audit for fiscal year nineteen twenty. Material weaknesses continued to be found and cited by the external independent auditor. In this audit, the external auditor finds two material weaknesses in the accounting of Health and Social Services realignment funding and in the county's closeout procedures at the end of the fiscal year. In finding two thousand nineteen zero zero one, the external auditor cited the lack of a mechanism to separate funds earmarked for one of these three categories of realignment spending and recommended a review of five years of H and H S records to sort things out, as well as separate the three funding streams going forward. In finding two thousand nineteen zero zero two, the external auditor found that late arriving funds were not properly classified, and that resulted in the forty four thousand four ninety three in HHS and one million twenty three forty three in the welfare administration. Then Auditor Controller Wimpel does not submit a cap. So Diana did not have a plan to fix these. By the end of fiscal year nineteen twenty, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, the county external independent audit becomes a hot mess. External auditor notes that findings two thousand nineteen zero zero one and two thousand nineteen zero zero two have not been implemented. This resulted in findings two thousand twenty two zero zero one and two thousand twenty two zero zero two, respectively, Lassen County loses low risk auditee status. Sometime later, then Auditor Controller Morgan submits a cap in response to findings to of the external auditor. This cap promises H and H S staff will be working on this in the next twelve months, instead of projecting a completion date as required. Morgan also discovers the hot mess that is county auditing using the new MUNIS software. Attempts to deal ineffectively, then Auditor Controller Morgan submits a cap for finding two thousand twenty zero zero one, projecting completion by June two thousand twenty two, and for finding two thousand twenty zero zero two with the same working on it verbiage. And I I want to stop right here because I know that we've been talking a lot about mental health funding and that the state is coming back and asking us to prove that some of the funding that mental health got was spent correctly. We also know that we lost our legacy system, which held all of those reports. And I'm just saying, had this come back to us in two thousand twenty, we still have that system up and running. Had they had gone back and did what the external auditor asked them to do, which was balance out those H and H S accounts, we would probably be in a much better place today in in dealing with that state audit that's currently going on. In their findings, the external auditors recommended creation of a year-end checklist, again, for closing the books and publishing the county financial statements, fully staffing the auditor controller's office by hiring more and better trained, educated, experienced staff and providing additional training to staff with emphasis on accounting specific to governmental entities to ensure not only competency, but also currency. Further, the independent external auditors noted the continuation of failures to properly account for realignment and unused funds for mental health, social services, and public health sections of the Health and Social Services Department. Among their recommendations was that Lassen County review at least five years past financial activity within H and H S to determine the value of cash and investments remaining on the books there. In her cap, then Auditor Controller Morgan agreed with finding two thousand twenty zero zero one and indicated she had brought back our retired auditor Diana Wimpel. It doesn't say that, but that was our retired auditor that came back was Diane Wimpel to assist and train staff. Anticipated completion was estimated to be June two thousand twenty two. In response to findings two thousand twenty zero zero two, Auditor Controller Morgan referred to discussions with H and H S Department, cited their own personal vacancies and issues, then outlined in general terms that H and H S would come up with a plan and implement it. Morgan's anticipated completion date was given as H and H S staff will be working on this in the next twelve months. And then if we go down to the bottom of page thirty three, end of fiscal year twenty one twenty two. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two, the external auditor found findings two thousand twenty two zero zero one that employees lacked understanding of revenue recognition rules and were receiving inadequate oversight and guidance from management. Lassen County does not regain status as a low risk auditee, and this audit identified weaknesses in the county's financial controls, which allowed for misreconciliation of accounts between the county's general ledger and subsidiary ledgers kept by several county departments. Such reconciliations are normally done multiple times each fiscal year in accordance with GAAP. Most glaringly, the ledgers were not properly reconciled at the end of the fiscal year prior to compilation of the county's financial statements. The independent auditor noted a disrupted office with many personnel and managerial changes. These add to the disruptions wrought on by then exploding crisis over COVID nineteen led to the perfect storm in which the Office of the Auditor Controllers capsized. And I just want to tell you that when I took over office and I went into the auditor's office, I do agree with the statement of it was a very disrupted office. They had had many personnel and many managerial changes over the years. And that was one of the things that I told the board that I would work on is getting people back and making a cohesive team and pushing the auditor's office forward. I believe that I have done that, and I believe that the auditor's office is functioning well. And I think I told you when I was here with my Tyler update, I just can't close out this final year. And I I'm hoping now you can kind of see why and what some of the problems were that have been continually reoccurring and never dealt with under the prior administrations. Further, the external auditor found finding two thousand twenty zero zero two airs in accounting for federal grants in schools and roads, highway planning and construction, child support enforcement, and COVID nineteen. The last entry amounted to two point seven six million dollars understatement in COVID nineteen aid to the county. Lassen County still does not regain low risk auditee status. Finding two thousand twenty two zero zero one cites lack of basic accounting knowledge and being able to recognize revenues and lack of supervision over staff. Again, the auditor recommended ongoing training and continuous education of accounting staff. Finally, finding two thousand twenty two zero zero two puts the nail in the coffin. Schools and roads grants to counties known as Title III were overstated by seventy eight thousand three hundred and forty three dollars. Highway planning and construction was overstated by five hundred and fifty seven thousand two hundred and six dollars. Child support enforcement was overstated by three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and twenty eight dollars. And COVID nineteen state and local fiscal recovery funds were understated by two million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These are all items that must be reported by Schedule of Expenditure Federal Assistance, CIFA, to all federal governments. The net understatement of countywide spending for federal aid spending of one point eight one million eight hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty three hundred dollars would have led to problems if not flagged in this audit. Failure of a CIFA to reconcile to a simple trial balance is really basic and very hard to miss and would have been one of the then Auditor Controller Morgan's final duties as her term ended six months after the end of the fiscal year. And then we're almost done, I promise, guys. At the end of fiscal year twenty two twenty three, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty three, external single audit is unavailable. So what I gave you and what my supervisor Scanlon had held up earlier is this is finally the draft of the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty three audit. And part of the reason that it has taken so long to do this, which I will get into, is that we lost our auditing firm. We had to go out to RFP to find a new auditing firm. I also wanted, the auditor's office had been producing the financial statements, all of the numbers that are in these audits every year. And I wanted the outside auditors to actually find those numbers and make sure that the numbers that were given to them before in the past were accurate, and if there needed to be any change to the financials. That took some time. And it also took some time. You can read the findings in here. The findings are still the same, nine audits later. We're still dealing with the same findings there, some new findings that moving forward. And I think like I've told you in the past, when you're not current on your current audits, when you're not current on your audits and they give you the findings, it's very hard to fix the findings in current time because you don't know what those findings are. And so that is why it's very important that we continue to work as diligently as we can to catch up on these audits. Also, also, it's really difficult. We have a lot of departments who have who have lost a lot of employees that have worked for the county for years. And so it's also very difficult with with new employees to get everything we need for these audits as as well. And they work very, very hard, and we are all working together, but it slows the process down tremendously. And I think that one of the things that, I don't know if Pete will speak to it, but being this so far behind on their audits is putting the county at risk with the federal government of losing federal funds. And we know that. But we also can't close an audit with an outside auditors until we can give them all of the documentation that they're requesting. And if and if I can't give them what they want or I can't get to them what they want, they're not going to close out the audit. I think that when I come back with our current outside auditors to present this audit to you, hopefully in September before I leave, they can discuss some of the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say pitfalls we had in getting this information. And that also has to do with not our quiet auditing firm not wanting to really work with them. So it makes it, it made it a difficult audit to complete. So on February, or February eighth, Cardenas releases an RFP for an external independent audit. Well, that came about because Price Page, who was currently under contract, January twenty third, two thousand twenty four, sends us a letter that says, thank you for the opportunity to be of service to the county of Lassen. Over the past several years, as our firm continues to grow and develop, we have the need to consider how we can best serve our clients. Our goal is to provide timely professional service. And after careful evaluation, we do not believe we are in the best position to serve the county. Therefore, regrettably, we must sever our business relationships with the county and ask that you engage another accounting firm to provide financial statement audit services for year in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty three, and subsequent years. That was a devastating blow because we were already behind on the audits. They pulled out. I thought they were gonna call and tell me, oh, we're gonna be here to start the audit. Instead, they called and said, we don't want to be the county's auditors anymore. We did go out for RFP on February eighth. It takes thirty to forty five days to close an RFP. Then you have to do the contract signing, come back to the board, and then they have to schedule you in. That is also why this audit took so long to complete. Had Price Page stayed with us as the auditor and finished out their contract, I believe that we would have already been moved on to maybe even current on our audits because we knew we were going to have to go out to RFP after the twenty three twenty four audit was completed. At this time, the civil grand jury wishes to announce appreciation for the efforts of the current auditor controller, treasure tax collectors' office, and information technology section of the administration department in the transfer to do new modern software. Auditor Controller Cardenas has worked diligently to get current internal controls in place with education and training for all employees in the auditor controller's office. Also, the IT department is working diligently with Tyler and Client First to make a deliverable of deployment of the software system to be up and running fully by July two thousand twenty four. I reached my goal. The auditor's office was completely using Tyler as the main county's financial system as of July first, two thousand twenty four. The only module that had was not up and fully running and corrected was the HR module. But as far as the auditor's office went, we had gone through, we had corrected payroll, we had worked with purers, we'd worked with the unions, we had, you know, we were on track to make this the county's software. And then and I don't know if you guys have any questions about the current audit, but I figure when I come back and the outside auditor is here, we can go more into detail into this audit, if that's okay with you. And then I wanted to kind of go to the findings on page thirty seven. And I wanted to go to finding ten. The process of appointment by the Board of Supervisors for the auditor controller vacancy seat was unsatisfactory, given that the Office of the Auditor Controller is technically challenging and professionally demanding position. The civil grand jury has found that the appointment process in the two thousand twenty resulted in the appointment of a candidate incapable of handling a looming software transition of a vital personnel and payroll system. And then I would also like to read finding twelve to you. County employees charged with keeping track of both county funds and state and federal dollars are sorely in need of training and professional development. And you keep seeing that as all of the findings in these audits are leading back to CIFA and and how to account for federal grants. Finding thirteen. The civil grand jury recognizes that the deficiencies noted in the external single audits for the past eight years generally involve accounting methods required for federal grants. Accrual different accrual bases being different from the perfectly adequate method used for decades cash basis in the accounting of funds generally, and failures in various county departments to recognize this difference. That's kind of why we went to Tyler. That's kind of why we went to Tyler is so that um Jen Ledge was a cash based system. It was built like in the eighties. It wasn't an accrual system. It was an attempt to come into um compliance and start doing for the federal grants on an accrual basis. And I think moving forward, um we will have less findings in regards to cash versus accrual base accounting. Finding fourteen, while problems with the transition from the outdated accounting software to the new MUNA software has been bumpy and wasteful, the effort has been stabilized as an on track to full implementation by July twenty twenty four. And once again, the auditor's office met that. Um, finding fifteen, the civil grand jury found no written succession plan in the Office of the Auditor Controller. When the incumbent Wimpel left the office in twenty twenty for retirement, there was no one to fill the void. Appointed Auditor Controller Morgan left in early twenty twenty three for health reasons. Therefore, the statutory remedy of appointing a qualified office holder was only partly successful, resulting ultimately in a vacant ballot in twenty twenty two, followed by a vacant office in twenty twenty three. And I want to talk about this a little bit. So when I took over um the two positions, we talked about that a lot. You know, what happens if something happens to you? Are you training someone that can run the offices? Um, is there going to be anybody to replace you if nobody signs up to run for these offices? Will they sign up to run for the offices? And um I'm here to tell you, yes, in all of those capacities. I have been working very hard with my two assistants to make sure they understand the core operations of those two departments and that they're capable to continue to run those um departments. And had I had stayed, they were going to sign up and or they are still going to sign up hopefully and run for election. So am I leaving you with people that will keep the offices in good health and standing until the June twenty twenty sixth election? I will tell you, yes, I believe so with all of my heart that my two assistants can continue on and keep the county functioning. And now I'd like to go to the recommendations by the grand jury on page thirty eight. And recommendation number nine, the Board of Supervisors should develop a comprehensive written plan to find and entice qualified persons to run for office. And I don't think they're just talking about auditor controller. I think they're talking about all the elected offices. And um recommendation twelve, the chief administrative officer should mandate annual continuing education and training for all county staff that work with or handle funds and or accounts to include management of state and federal grants, enforce attendance and tests for compliance, initiate HR actions as required. The chief administrative officer should routinely assure the Board of Supervisors that this is carried out. And I guess the way you would know that this is being done is when you get a copy of your current audit. If the findings go away and the CIFAs are done correctly, then you then you know that the training has been conducted and the staff understands what needs to happen um in reporting to the state and federal government. Recommendation thirteen, the Board of Supervisors should provide the Auditor Controller's Office with resources to hire and train a compliance auditor, trained to find compliance issues before they show up in the annual single audit. This was on my to do list. So currently um in the auditor's office, there's only four staff members in there. We are going back and forth with um Health and Social Services actually going over and doing training because they still do not have adequate fiscal staff over there. I think they have come and talked to you multiple times about their vacancies. And so one of my um staff people, Nicole Madden, who also worked in H and H S, goes over and provides training um to them for CIFAs and just general fiscal accounting because they have no fiscal officers. And it would be nice if she was, uh if this job was created, flown, and she could apply for it and whoever got the job to be paid for actually being a compliance auditor. And after nine years of bad audits, we really have to do something to make sure that the information that's going to the auditor, outside auditor, is correct before it leaves the county. There needs to be one person that is completely trained that can review all of that um information before it gets sent to the outside auditors. That is the only way we're gonna clean up these um CIFA reports and make sure that the county continues to get its funding. Um, recommendation fourteen, the civil grand jury would like to recommend that an award be given to Ms. Cardenas for her everlenting service to the county of Lassen to get the Auditor Controller's Office back on track and have a clean slate for the twenty twenty seven elected officials that take her place. If this transition is successful, this would call for an award for all IT employees involved in this effort as well. I don't know if I will ever get an award and um it is definitely not the clean slate I had hoped to leave um for whoever is incumbents of those offices for twenty twenty seven. It is better than the day I walked in. Is it completely cleaned up? No. That will take a lot of time and a lot of cooperation from all county departments, admin, and the board to continue moving it forward and um taking care of all of these audit findings. And it's not something that the auditor's office can do by itself. Um, the Board of Supervisors should direct the chief administrative officer, oh, finding fifteen, I'm sorry. The Board of Supervisors should direct the chief administrative officer to request each elected county office to come up with a written succession plan as well as written professional development plans. These may be published in employee policies. The Board of Supervisors should consider the question of requiring the chief administrative officer to do similar processes for all non-elected county departments. And once again, I think we have all sat here and seen so much of our history retire and not really have a succession plan for training and transferring of their knowledge. And that has really hurt us over the years and um it will continue to hurt us if we don't have some some type of succession plan, some type of training so that if something happens to someone or they retire when they walk out the door, they don't take everything they know with them. And um that's very detrimental to the county when that has happened, when that happens. And the last um one is R nineteen. Future civil grand jury should visit all elected and non-elected offices for an assessment of those operations, whether good or bad. And actually, I want to say um you know Supervisor Ingram has kind of been asking for departments to come before this board and tell them where they're at and what's going on and so that the board kind of has a feeling. If the board doesn't want to do that, if the grand jury offers that for you, then maybe that's a way you end up getting kind of the pulse of your departments and and um what the grand jury feels are the findings or the problems within those departments. So I just have my so now um I just have my statement that I wrote to finish. In closing, that was why I was so shocked, hurt, and felt totally disrespected through the elected positions, both the one I was elected to and the one I chose to be appointed to. After all the hard work and effort that both the Treasurer, Tax Collector, and Auditor Controller's office, as well as some very kind retired and new attendants that chose to come back and help with the migration process of the new system over the last two years. Not only have both offices worked together to overcome past deficiencies, but also to implement and train the entire county staff, and I mean the entire county staff. We took the auditor's office, the the main auditor's office, and made it a training room. We did not pay for training. My staff was trained and then we brought each department in and we continued to do that and provide training for the county. Implement and train the entire county staff on the new MUNA system, but also to correct payroll processes, correct PERS reporting, work with the IRS to be able to be in compliance with tax codes and pass IRS audits and hopefully not to have to pay penalties and interest, as well as staying current with daily tasks of the office. And I'm gonna tell you, that's a lot with four people. Trying to work in the past, the present um and while working with outside auditors on adopting policies and guidelines that will allow Lassen County to be low risk audit again in the future. I was concerned when I received a text from Mr. Anderson on Monday, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, at eight twenty nine, asking me to call him. When I called him and he answered, he asked how I was doing. I told him the truth that I had been prescribed new blood pressure medication and I was getting used to it and I was tired. To which he replied, well, that's why I'm calling you. Amanda and I am concerned about your health. The rest of my recollection of that call is in my statement of retirement. The following actions since July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, up to last week's board meeting shows me that I do not have the support of the CAO, County Council, or majority of the board. And for all those reasons, it is in the best interest of the people of Lassen County for me to retire and the offices to be split prior to the twenty twenty six election. I have also talked with you today about succession plans and I specifically talked to you about my succession plan for the current offices I now hold. I have been working with and training both my Assistant Treasurer, Tax Collector, Taya Shore, and my Assistant Auditor Controller, Stephanie Heranik, to be able to continue carrying out the core functions of these two offices. I will say that if Ms. Heranik was not the Assistant Auditor Controller, much of the current progress in the auditor's office would not have been made. Ms. Heranik remains a vital bridge between the old General Ledger system and was essential in building the new MUNA system. She also played and still plays an intricate role in correcting payroll and PERS reporting. It is my hope that the board will do the right thing with not only my two assistants, but the elected offices and the people of Lassen County and appoint them to carry out the rest of my term. They are the only ones who truly understand where we have been and what steps need to be taken to get us where we need to be. I would also like to remind you, and I gave you the government codes for vacancies and the qualifications for the auditor and treasurer, tax collector, that the government codes that I have provided state that the board shall appoint. I also know that the bank will not accept a new master signer on the account if that person has not been appointed slash elected treasurer. And they also need this appointment to monitor and transfer life and the investments. I would also like to remind the board what happened the last time someone was appointed to the auditor's office that did not fully understand all of the responsibilities of that office. And with that, I would like Superintendent of Schools, Mrs. Patricia Gunderson, to complete my presentation to you today on the school side of this.
I do have a letter. Um, hang on, you must teach me. Yes. Kathy Gunderson, Lassen County Superintendent of Schools. Um, I do have a letter. I'm not gonna read it verbatim. You guys can read it. I just want to recap a couple of things. So I have also worked with um the auditor and the treasurer's office for the last eleven years. Um, when auditor Diana Wumpel was elected, Nancy was elected. I was also elected. Um, we've had some rocky times. Um, and I'm just wanted to share a couple of uh not really concerns, but make everybody aware of of where we sit. So with Nancy's um retirement, um the county treasurer holds approximately ninety million dollars of uh school funds. So we we are your biggest account. Uh, the county schools are your biggest account in the county treasurer. Monthly, uh, we um uh run payroll for uh between six hundred and seventy five and seven hundred employees. It's approximately two point three six million dollars a monthly payroll warrants. And vendor, that doesn't include our vendor distributions. And so with Nancy's um retirement, there is an urgent it is urgent that someone be appointed to those positions. It takes us thirty days to update our system so that checks can be processed. So we have to have the signature thirty days prior to when we run our payroll, which actually runs the last week of September for the um which would come out in October. So it's it's really kind of critical that the appointments be done in a timely manner. That also being said, we have also um since uh like I said, have had some rocky years. And since Nancy has taken over, we also work extremely close with uh Stephanie and Taya. We work with them on a daily basis. We reconcile all of our funds um on a on a monthly basis, but we work really closely with them. The auditor's office is really supposed to be the watchdog for all of the funds that come into the the county with the treasure with the uh treasurer, tax collector, really making sure that the funds from property taxes and stuff go to the right place. So I'm just here today to really let you know that, number one, we work extremely closely with them. We do hold um majority of the funds in the county treasury at this time. Um, and um what are I'm looking forward to make sure that we continue to have that close working relationship so that we can continue to move forward um with the obligations that each of those, each of our elected um offices are required to do. Any questions?
Thank you.
Grab my water, I'm sorry. So do you have any questions of of me? I guess that's why Tom asked for this to be.
Any any questions, comments? I just have a comment. Okay, I'd like to thank you for bringing this up to date on all this. You've done a lot of work into that and I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I agree. You've done a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Obol. First off, Nancy, I want to say thank you for your years of service. You stepped into a role when you didn't have to, but you volunteered for it. You've been elected. You worked for the county for how many years, you said?
Twenty six total.
Yeah, it's been phenomenal. And it's very unfortunate you can't fulfill your term. I thought, you know, you've done an excellent job for this county. You've got all the roles that you've done. You've been a valuable piece of it and it's gonna be hard lost. I was, you know, I hope you can fulfill your term and keep going on this because you've you've come a long ways, let me say. And I think every time you brought in that date, you've got nothing but poodles, smock. I saw here on the progress you made for it, you know, and you you brought us the long ways. Um, you know, like I don't know, this, the whole grand jury thing, I mean, I appreciate what they do, but some of their findings and recommendations they have, I mean, here again, we just got, we have to have a new auditor by the twenty sixth, we have to appoint somebody. We just got chastised in the grand jury report because it took us four months to get another one, saying we were hasty and we didn't do it right, etc., etc. So I mean, we're we're caught in a middle wing situation with the grand jury and it just grinds me. I can dig all kinds of holes in the findings that they have. But we don't have any say over an elected official. We don't. We can't make him do anything. And then it's very hard and very difficult for us. It puts us in a bad light and makes us feel bad because we can't do anything. It's just like we had Tyler before, you know, we unless somebody asks for help, we can't help them. It's it's up to them to come to us and say, we need more money, we need more training, we need more this. And then we can allocate that far, but until they do that, we can't do anything. And so we sit there and we flog and we struggle for how many years with the previous two auditors until you come along. And then we had to get other people to come in and help us and so anyway, so here we are today and there's hard feelings and there's mad and there's anger and and it's not good. And so and and now we're gonna have to start over, do the whole thing over again. But anyway, it's a big hole. It's a big hole and it's it's very difficult, but hopefully the we can find somebody to make an appointment by the September twenty sixth, so we can keep their same role. Not only for the county, but for the schools and everybody else is gonna have to go in and it's you know how difficult it is to find people with the qualification for an auditor. It's not very many people out there in this county that have the qualifications to be an auditor or treasurer, tax collector. So it's gonna get tough, but we'll we'll muddle through it and get it done. Once again, I just want to say thank you for your years of service and appreciate it. I mean, I I heard that this was coming. I was hoping that it wasn't, but maybe you'll resend it.
I don't think so, but I do want to tell you, Erin, you do have control over your appointed department heads and how they train their staff. And a lot of your audit findings are coming out of your appointed department heads um departments, um roads. I guess the sheriff isn't appointed, but to require them to make sure that their staff is trained is a way that you can help the elected auditor to make sure that those audit findings don't occur. And the board does have control over that. And that was one of the findings from the grand jury is that you could send them to training which they need to understand how to account for those grants. So that is in your control.
Part of that. But we can't.
And I once again told you that I am leaving you with two very qualified people that will qualify for both of those jobs. And that was my succession plan that I promised to leave you with when I took this job.
I hope you're, I haven't talked to him about that, but I'm sure we'll go through that process and make that determination. Thank you for your endorsement of my message. I wouldn't say, but it does make it hard. So anyway, I just uh I just can't say thank you enough, Nancy.
I would like to just tag on to what Nancy said about, so we have about a year left. And she is, the two people that, her two assistants are really the people that we deal with from the schools. And so I would hope that you would look internally to those people for your appointments. It will make it a fairly quick process. They do know what they're doing, and they can continue to lead the county in a positive way. And so I, and again, both of those people have been in those departments. You know, they've either been there and come back, or they've been there long term, and so they have that historical knowledge, and they know how to work with their partners outside of the county. And so I would really hope that you would look internally to possibly fill both of these positions as Nancy transfers out. And then, you know, anybody can throw their name in the hat to actually be elected, but I would hope that we would have one more year of pretty consistent leadership in those departments because they need more judges.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to look the whole thing holistically. We can't just be focused or narrow-minded. But so a couple of questions is, is why wasn't the old system backed up? And who was responsible for not backing up the old accounting system, or disappeared into the abyss?
So we all knew for years that the system was dying. And that if anything happened to the system, if the server failed, anything happened, that we were not going to be able to get that server up and running. And there was a major power snafu with the sheriff's office that took down not only our system, legacy system, but one of their legacy systems and one of Planning's legacy systems, as well as took down our entire firewall and network for the entire county. And when I T went to put all of it back together, our system wouldn't come up. And we knew that that was always of the possibility, that it may not come up. And it's going to make this next audit hard because that's the last audit, the one that is coming up that we should be starting here real soon, to make that real hard because that was the last audit on the old system. And we all knew that that was a huge risk. And it just happened. Nobody knew the day or time that it was going to go, but it went, and we can't get it back. Believe me, I have cried, begged both Robert Tally at the Office of Education and Travis to, is there anything we can do to resurrect this thing? And I have been told multiple times, there is not Nancy. It's a dead system.
And so how are we going to get this next final audit done?
Well, thankfully, Sam, who is your I T department head, has been saying to everyone, download as many reports and things as you have. And Stephanie had downloaded the books as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. But she had not been able to go in and download all of the closing entries for that year. So now she'll have to go in on an Excel spreadsheet and do those closing entries to get it to the auditor because we no longer have access to the system. So once again, it's just going to be a lot of hand entry, a lot of time that's put in by staff to get the numbers and what the outside auditors need. But there isn't anything we can do about it at this point because the system is gone.
We are. I guess there's not much else we can do.
No, believe me, Erin, I have tried every way to, to, you know, begged everyone to please look at it, even Doug Campbell, who administered that system. And, and part of the reason we had to go to Tyler is because nobody writes in that language anymore, right? And so there's no way to bring that, another server online that can read or do that data. It's just, it's just an outdated, dead language, computer language.
You know, I just want to go back to part of Tom's frustration that he has, you know, this is many, many years ago, we had our auditor coming. I hadn't been sitting on the board at the time. When she, we knew the old system, she knew the old system was going down ten years ago, eight years ago. And they come back and they said, well, Tyler Minus, that's the one we need to go with. Because that's, it's going to be the salvation. It's the best thing going, etc. I didn't like it because of the cost of it, etc., and the cost of it. But anyway, the board went ahead and went with it, and here we are.
And you're not going to like the new number.
And here we are again, and it's still not working, but.
Well, that is not necessarily true. The only, the majority of the program is working, and we are teaching staff, and with all new programs, it takes.
It takes us to give, I mean, that's the.
Two thousand and eighteen is what the grand jury quoted is when it came forward and what we're in twenty twenty-five, so.
But my point is, is that as board supervisors, we don't know what accounting program's going to work for what departments. And so we authorize them because that's, she said that's the one they needed. So we went with that. And then it would never, it took how many years to even try to get that thing to start to be implemented? I mean, it wasn't until you come on board, Nancy, that this thing started going, that it sat there vacant for, through Wample and through Morgan until you come along, and then you was the one that got the ball rolling and got this thing going. You're the one. It wasn't the previous two. And that's my point. Is that we're only as good as the information we're provided. They provide us with information, this Tyler Minus is the one we need to go with. And so I went with it. Whipple did nothing with it. It was her recommendation. Morgan was forced into it. She didn't do anything with it. It wasn't until you come along, you got the ball rolling on this, and asks that we need help. We've got to get training. We've got to get I T involved. We've got to build this thing. It wasn't until you that this thing actually kicked off. And that's my, my point, was thank you for doing that and getting other people involved because the previous people never did. Because they never asked for help. And as a board of supervisors, we can't go to an elected official and say, you need to get this done. We can, we did that, but what happened? Nothing. We have no control over it. That's my point. That's my point. You're the only one that have the wherewithal to ask for help, saying, I can't do this. You asked for help, you got it, and now we're starting to go with it. But here again, now we're behind the eight ball because nobody else would do it. So now we're going to be struggling again.
Yep.
The community's kicking our butt. The R S is kicking our butt. Cal purge, everybody's after it. Auditors, everybody. Because other people are too lazy to do their job, didn't want to ask for help, too prideful, whatever. And now we're suffering.
I totally agree, and I don't have any solutions for you other than to keep tracking through and trying to get caught up as quickly as we can because we can't just say, oh, let's not do these other audits because federal government wants them for every single year. We have no choice but to walk the road. We still have to continue to walk the road until we kick her. There's no choice. We don't make those rules either.
I know. In the meantime, he can't get these roads built, and everybody's chewing on our ass. Thank you again for getting this ball rolling and almost getting across the face line for you, but I wish you'd stick around and finish it, but I understand.
I just kind of wanted to echo on what Supervisor Alba said, Nancy. Ever since I've been elected, you said, when the people and personnel that have been here for years and they leave, they take a plethora of institutional knowledge with them. And part of the grand jury reports year after year is, is have a succession plan, have a succession plan. That's the one thing you told me, shoot, I think in the hallway on the day we got elected. In this case, I'm fully confident in what you've done with Stephanie Heranik as far as taking over the auditor's office, and Taya Short taking over the treasurer's office. I think you're leaving us in good hands. I beg and wish you would stay for the rest of your term, just like Erin said, and another thing is, I agree with every single finding in last year's grand jury report, every single point. And I was the only supervisor that voted against the county's rebuttal. I found it arrogant and irresponsible, the grand jury's findings. I mean, why have a grand jury if we're not going to even recognize their recommendations? But I agree with every single one of them, and I wish you would stay, and I think it'd be a grave mistake if we, if we broke anything up, whether it be Stephanie taking over the auditor's office, or Taya taking over the treasurer's office. It would create more chaos, and both the offices where we need to keep everything going the way it is and finish up our audits. And I appreciate all the hard work and dedication that you've had in Lassen County, and thank you. And the main thing, the, the one finding I really, really agree with, well, I agree with all of them. You do deserve an award. You took on chaos and got us going in the right direction. With, with the exception of personnel getting up the snuff and getting trained on Tyler, you're leaving us in a good position. I just want to thank you for that, Nancy.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Board Members, and County Council. My name is Elaine Jigdis. I retired from Lassen County in twenty twelve, after thirty years of service. First, a little about my background with the county. I started work in nineteen eighty-one with the welfare department, welfare department, and was a supervisor over the programs where we determined eligibility for clients. I then went to child support as office manager. My duties included budget and compliance. My last position was fiscal officer for mental health. My duties included budgets, contracts, tracking revenue and expenditures, meeting with department heads and working with their support staff to make sure all billings were being done correctly so that all services that were provided were entered into a system so they could be billed. It was up to me and my staff to keep spreadsheets that tracked where we were within a certain time of our budget. Because with mental health, it's a guessing game. Your budget is a stream of billings that are done with services. And if your staff is not providing those services and billing, you're not going to meet your budget expenditures that you need the cash flow for. So I do have knowledge of how things run within the county. I had the opportunity to work with great auditors, Irie Doyle and Karen Faust, who led this county in great, a great way. When Mrs. Cardenas first came to tell me she was going to accept the position as the auditor, I told her she was crazy. The horror stories that I heard about the mess in the office were awful, and I continued to hear them and continued to hear them. And if I'm hearing things, that tells you how bad it is. She felt she was capable of doing the job and wanted to go in and help get this county back on track. She went in to an office with low morale and no training. And her staff did everything that they needed to do and hit the ground running. Every day brought newfound challenges along with the old ones. Her and her staff were able to accomplish many things while still waiting on admin to do their part. There are still many issues remaining. What took years to mess up will take a while to hopefully get corrected. You are losing a very knowledgeable person, and her twenty-six years of experience was a great asset. Thank God she had trained and prepared two of her staff that can step in and do the job. If you do not put qualified people in, you will be back to square one. I am also outraged for the vote of confidence given the C A O after him and county council pulled in Mrs. Cardenas' staff and talked to them about health issues, which is a violation of HIPAA. And if your attorney doesn't even know that, then she needs to be fired. I will be having, everyone is aware of HIPAA. It is time that the board and admin take accountability for many of the fiscal issues that were existing within departments. Both the board and admin got allowed their newly hired H S S and public health director to basically get rid of the chief fiscal officer position that supervised all the fiscal officers within each department of that department, H S S and thing. Those fiscal officers had the same duties I had, kept track of revenues, could tell Yvonne Smith, who was the chief fiscal officer at that time, with her oversight, exactly what was going on. What was not coming in? What were the issues? Financially, can we meet our budget? Should we not fill vacancies? That kind of stuff. You allowed this woman to come in and destroy that fiscal office. You have no fiscal officers. That is unacceptable. How would you know what's going on with the departments? I find it unacceptable that you're all making excuses about it's not my problem. You hire the department heads. It is your responsibility to at least help meet with that department head and question the fiscal stability of that department. So by you telling me you have no responsibility, that's unacceptable. That is your job. You can have all your other committees and everything for that, but you are not helping the county remain fiscally sound by not making your department heads accountable. Mental health is looking at millions of dollars that have to be paid back that you don't have to pay back. It is time you all waked up, woke up and smelled the coffee. You were voted in by the public to oversee and educate and know the issues. No one expects you to be an expert, but that's why you have department heads to give you that information. And that's why your department has fiscal people within their departments to keep it going. You look. It is time you become more involved with the county. You are their bosses.
You're about wrapped up, Elaine.
Pardon?
Are you about wrapped?
Yeah. You can make sure departments kept up the fiscal information. I am tired of excuses by board members saying it's not our fault. You hire people to run your programs. You're not keeping up with them. You're not talking to them and making them provide the information that needs to be provided. So yes, that is your responsibility. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I didn't fill out a speaker's form. I've been a member of the.
You're going to have to come to the podium, and we need.
My name is Martin Balding.
Thank you.
And I met Nancy when I was the manager, the general manager for the Stone's Bed Guard Community Service System. At that time, it was about eleven years ago, I guess. I was trying to work with the Treasury's Department because we had some funds that we needed to invest. And I didn't get any place. As soon as Nancy came on board, I talked to her, and within a very short time, everything was efficiently handled to the benefit of the community service department. And it's been a pleasure. Every time I contacted her, there was quick help and response. And I'm sure that's the way she serviced all the various districts, service districts and others that she's worked with. So it's been, and at some point after that, I became a member of the Oversight Committee. Our last meeting was on May thirteenth. And Maurice was not at that meeting. It would have been a good time to have brought some of this up at that time. So that's, I'm convinced that Nancy is the person that you want to have. She's managing, how many millions of dollars do you have in the portfolio right now?
You're going to have to talk to us, sir.
Two hundred and twenty million.
Okay, there we are. We're over two hundred million dollars of our county funds. I wouldn't want anyone else to take that over right away. She knows what she's doing. And one of the questions you might want to ask, in the Oversight Committee report, we have a list of the investments at that time in May, and those investments are turning over all the time. This is not investing in bitcoins or stocks. It's investing in firms that we believe are strong enough and can continue to pay interest to the county. And of course, the interest is not enough to keep up with inflation, but it's our only attempt to keep up with inflation. And you need someone who can manage that carefully and astutely. If you go into the office, you can get a list of the investments she's making, and you pick out anything on that list and tell them you want to see the paperwork for that company. Because this cannot all be made out of the in digital where we can't access it. So that information is there. I'm sure we have someone who takes care of it very carefully. So I would encourage the county to do whatever they can. Simply to satisfy Nancy Cardenas at this point. Because she's investing for all of us. And I'm absolutely convinced that she's reliable, conscientious, intelligent. And doing the best job she can for the county. Now I'll have to admit, I came in with a little bit of prejudice. I've been trying to work with the building department, uh, to get a well built on my property, Eagle Lake. Well, that sounds like a subject that's just off base right here. But I've been stonewalled at every point. And it was last November on the first that I came in and got a. A county stamp on a letter and I left it there for Maurice Anderson. And I still haven't had an answer on that. They will not come to, Maurice has instructed, uh, his workers not to talk to me. And he himself won't talk to me. I've been in the office at least three times, asking a rather simple question. No one will talk to me and I'm going to leave this, excuse me, with my supervisor. He might be able to get a response for me that I haven't been able to get. And if you'll excuse me, I'm finished with my presentation. And thank you very much supervisors.
Thank you.
For representing me and everyone in accounting and taking your time to be here and allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Nancy. I just want to, uh. You know how much I appreciate.
I'm period of terror.
All right. Nancy, I want to let you know how much I appreciate you. You, you've done a, a great, a great job. And I, I've asked you numerous times to reconsider and I'm still asking. And, um, it was without your, without your hard work. Lassen County doesn't know how. How they, that she pulled this out. Uh, a huge situation that. In my mind, there is no doubt that the state would have came in and started taking over the financial. Part of Lassen County. We were, it was a mess and it's still a mess. And so, um. You have got us to, to a point, uh, you know, that we're using the, the Tyler system. The Tyler system, it, to Aaron's point. Um. It, it's taken other counties two years, two years to implement the Tyler system. And now we're working on our eighth year. So Mr. Alba, we could have had all of that stuff in place of the unit system. That, that, that we're in badly need of now. But. But, uh, because of that, and that's why I have been asking, asking, when can we get this project? Wrapped up. You know, and, um. And Nancy has had, and, and she's trained her staff. She's came in and she set that goal that she was going to have two people in place when she left. To be able to take over, uh, those two departments. Because when the board chose to have the, the two offices combined. Tom Neely was the one that, that wrote in opposition that we needed that two offices separated. Because we need, uh, you know, more sets of eyes on, on our money. And so she has trained. Uh, I think two people that are qualified to take over her, her, uh, her, the two offices. And, um, you know, I just, I. I don't know how we're going to move forward. She's, she's worked with the consultants because Tyler. Hasn't been a good partner. They supposedly in their records that they gave us, that in. Uh, January of two thousand and nineteen, our staff was trained. And they're not trained. And so, you know, I mean, I. I mean, I just, uh. I'm, I'm heartbroken that, that, uh, we can't get Nancy to stay because I think we need her leadership. In order to finish out this project. And she was really close to getting it done, but. But I don't know. It just seems like if you're a worker, the county wants to run you off. And that just irritates me to no end. And so, um, you know, I just, um. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just frustrated, you know, uh, why? Why we can't get, uh, staff to complete their, their projects? You know, I don't know, uh. I don't know why, why they can't, uh, get their projects completed, but I'm, I'm expecting an answer. So that's all I have on, on this topic and I would like to take a five minute break.
Thank you, sir.
And that's, uh. Good morning.
Hello, I'm returning from last week.
Hey.
I'm Tiffany Armstrong, Director of Lassen County General Health. And we're going to go over the two agreements. Hopefully you guys had an opportunity to review both documents and you had any questions for me about each one. And we can start with the twenty-five dash. Twenty-five dash five zero one through.
Yes.
Agreed.
I, I thank you for the extra week to review those documents. They've taken the whole week to pick up with it. Um. Already, uh, we already talked about the idea of, uh, contact and connection on, on one page, but, um. My question is far beyond the contract about minor consent. And, uh, I'm just curious about, I know what the contract says. Remind you can ask for services without overriding the parents or, you know, big consent to that. Um. What's the actual practice on that? I mean, I know what the contract said, but what's actually happening? Are kids coming to you that way or happening?
Oh yeah, we have very few kids that come through, but we do have on occasion a few children that have come through in the last number of years. Where they've asked for services just on their own accord with no parental involvement. So we actually have a developed a policy within the department that we go by. Um, this policy really clearly articulates how we handle children over the age of twelve who are coming in without any sort of parents involved. Um, on a rare occasion, we have children that are coming in and saying, hey, there's stuff happening to me, but I don't want my parents to know. Because their parents could be involved in the situation. So they come in, they ask for services, we provide those services discreetly, um, without them. But the idea is to really keep focused that we want them to get back with their parents. But in some occasions, because we are mandatory reporters, we do have to follow through with those guidelines. If there is something that, if they are being physically, sexually, emotionally abused, we have to follow through with the child protective services. Like I said, there are very few that come through, but on occasion we do have kids that do seek services without. Um, the question I get the most often is why did the state pick the age of twelve? Um, I don't know why they picked twelve. Why did they pick thirteen or fourteen or fifteen? Um, it's just that the state decided that because if a child has reproductive rights and they could pick. You know, for physical health reasons to go and get services without their parent consent. They thought that would apply to the same for mental health services. So again, I don't know the reasoning behind the age of twelve, but that's what the state agreed on.
In general, if the, uh, parents aren't considered a suspect, as an example in the thing, would you, would you normally notify the parents?
Oh, absolutely. There's occasions to say, you know what, this is a, because it's all in the discretion of the therapist. Once they're assessing that child and say, this isn't really something that we have to keep from the parent. We need to involve the parents and absolutely we will involve the parents at that point. Um, sometimes there's misunderstanding, miscommunication that goes on. And sometimes kids will say, you know, I got in trouble with my parents. I don't want my parents to know about it. That's different. This is really about them coming forward and saying I'm being physically, sexually, emotionally abused. And there is times where we have to be very careful and making sure that those kids are getting services and they're not being, um, going without services. But yeah, we have the, the describe, um, the therapists have the ability to use discretion in this. And there's been a lot of times where kids will come forward and say, oh, my parents know anything about it? No, they have to involve the parent. That's what the parents are there for is to hopefully work through it, whatever the communication issue might be.
Last question I have is, um, actually second last question. Um, towards the end of all contracts that we've talked about today, there's a, uh, a clause. That say, that says that none of the, uh. State funds can be used for any kind of religious purpose, which understand that. Uh, what I didn't see was any mention of any prohibition against the state paying lease or rent. Uh, to the county as opposed to a private, um. Property or.
That one I can't articulate too. Why they decided not to write that language in there? I don't know.
I'm asking that based on the previous question I submitted, uh, that, uh. When I made a suggestion about, you know, the county. Reversion, rebuilding and getting the state to pay us the rent. Several people jumped at one time and, oh, you can't do that. And I'm still looking for a reason why we can't do that.
Right. It would make sense though, if you think about it.
Well, it wasn't, this is a, 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 what do you call it?
An agree.
An agreement. Uh, and dictates how we're going to relate to the state and the services we're going to provide and being held accountable so to speak. Uh, so there's no mention of what I'm looking for there, but we'll keep looking, I guess.
We'll keep looking for them.
Thank you.
Um, but I did want to say that my, um, sent me a question that I thought would articulate here at the board, just to kind of. Hopefully ease some of the kind of what's going on. Why is there are two contracts and why are they almost identical to the same language? So if you remember years ago, drug and alcohol was its own standalone department. It actually had its own director, it had its own fiscal officers, it had its own clerical, had its own staff. Um, over the years, the Department of Healthcare Services said, no, we're not going to have a standalone department of drug and alcohol department. We're going to merge it with mental health. And so for the past ten, fifteen years, that's what we've been doing is merging ourselves together as what we call now behavioral health. Um, but there is still these standalone, um, federal guidelines that still have to abide to on the drug and alcohol side. So of course, when we're going through like. Compliance issues, QA, QI, quality assurance, quality improvement issues, there's times where I have to break it out and have separate contracts. One specifically for that drug and alcohol piece or one specifically that's for both specialty mental health and for drug medic health. So it gets very confusing because I know even myself and my staff, we get confused because it's like you're almost looking at the identical contracts when you're reading through verbatim. But there's these little nuances that happen with drug medic health versus the specialty mental health. And so when we go in and we sit down and we go through line by line, I have to create policies that are separate for the drug medic health side. So we know that there's special rules that still are in play, even though there's still no department, the standalone silent department for drug medic health. There's still stuff on the. It's still one of the nuances that I have to do according to the Department of Healthcare Services, not something I can really say, well, I really don't want to be worrying about posters. Um, but they're going to say, no, that is part of your job. We want to make sure the public knows and what services are you providing? They should go into the lobby and be able to see a poster in twenty point font that explains all your services that you currently. It's hard.
Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment real quick. It's pretty sad when. You're burning valuable daylight on stuff like this when you could be hands on helping the people and that's the reason that your department's there.
Correct.
That breaks my heart.
That is hard. Yeah. I mean, think about, we're serving children all the way through older adults. And when I have to take staff's time away to focus on this kind of stuff, what are we doing with our community that's really here for us? I mean. That's what we should be focusing on.
Uh, is there anybody from the public?
All right, I need a. Like to make a motion to approve the agreement number twenty five dash five zero one three five. With enforcement health and parent services and authorize the county administrative officer or designate me to execute the agreement.
Second. Okay, motion made by Supervisor Scanlon, second by Supervisor Bridges. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Oppose?
No.
Okay. Moving on to H three.
This again is the same, almost identical agreement from the one we just reviewed. This is twenty five dash five zero one zero zero, and this is for drug medical.
Almost an identical contract with a couple of different checkboxes.
Yes.
My complaint is about checking boxes.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement. Of twenty five dash five zero one zero zero. With the Department of Health Care Services and authorizes a county administrative officer or designate to execute the agreement.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges, seconded by Supervisor Scanlon. All those in favor?
No.
So we've had two recent trainings with the Tyler Project trainer. We had not worked with this person before. This person had not been offered from Tyler in the past. Um, and we found that she is very knowledgeable. Our training has gone extremely well. I think we're making progress. Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment real quick. It's pretty sad when. You're burning valuable daylight on stuff like this when you could be hands on helping the people and that's the reason that your department's there.
Correct.
That breaks my heart.
That is hard. Yeah. I mean, think about, we're serving children all the way through older adults. And when I have to take staff's time away to focus on this kind of stuff, what are we doing with our community that's really here for us? I mean. That's what we should be focusing on.
Uh, is there anybody from the public?
All right, I need a. Like to make a motion to approve the agreement number twenty five dash five zero one three five. With enforcement health and parent services and authorize the county administrative officer or designate me to execute the agreement.
Second. Okay, motion made by Supervisor Scanlon, seconded by Supervisor Bridges. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Oppose?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to H three.
This again is the same, almost identical agreement from the one we just reviewed. This is twenty five dash five zero one zero zero, and this is for drug medical.
All my questions were answered. It's almost an identical contract with a couple of different checkboxes.
Yes.
My complaint is about checking boxes.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement. Of twenty five dash five zero one zero zero. With the Department of Health Care Services and authorize the county administrative officer or designate to execute the agreement.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Bridges, seconded by Supervisor Scanlon. All those in favor?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, we're going to move to H four.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, last week I did give a report based on information I received from Mrs. Schapp, and she's here today and she's had another training with. Uh, the folks from HCM and she's heard she can give you a report.
Right.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, board members, Madam Clerk Regina Schapp, Personnel Risk Analyst. Um, so we've had two recent trainings with the Tyler Project trainer. We had not worked with this person before. This person had not been offered from Tyler in the past. Um, and we found that she is very knowledgeable. Our training has gone extremely well. I think we're making progress. When you start in the training room and you're going through and you're analyzing each. Uh, transaction and making sure that all of these records are clean and moving on to the next one. Of course, it always opens up the door for other things that you may have missed in other modules. Not all of them are connected together. So you start here and then you gotta go chase down something over here and then something over here. And so we found that there's still some minor cleanup in other areas. As we go through from beginning to end to clean up and audit those individual records. So out of the seven hundred, I believe in. Seven thirty four records that we had that were imported early on in the Tyler implementation system. We have now narrowed it down already to six hundred and thirty three records. And so we're just systematically going through one by one by one. And hopefully we'll be able to get those corrected, get all of those old records closed or and or deleted if they were duplicates. As long as they didn't have any people attached to them, we're able to delete them and move on. So I feel like we're making some progress now. We're getting a better understanding of that audit process. And these things should be non-existent in the future. And so right now we have one more training scheduled for September twenty second as we move through. Um, on our own in the next. You know, few weeks until September twenty second. And we can only do those on non payroll weeks. So that would be this week and then not next week, but the week after, so every two weeks. Is the only time that we can go in and physically work in these records because they have to be in a non payroll week. So that we're not missing with payroll. So right now, um. We have myself, Belinda, and we have Michelle Domondin in payroll. Who has a portion of that corrective corrective work to do her side. So. HR begins the process of initiating payroll and then payroll will initiate the actual payment to employees. And on, there are some records in those old seven hundred thirty four records initially that were never officially. Categorized as inactive after the payroll was run. So if you have an employee that left employment. If their record is closed out and inactivated on the payroll side, it still. Can have an impact on an active payroll. So we're discovering that there's just that finishing point in the payroll system. That they can complete now and and close all those old records from the payroll standpoint. So we're hoping that will clean up most of these records. Then we can look at. Creating the workflow, getting all of that to make sure it's working so that people can start implementing. The self-service module to get their time sheets entered. And it will follow a workflow thereafter where it goes, you know, the employee puts in their timesheet, it goes. Via email to their supervisor, supervisor can then electronically review everything, approve it, and then it goes to payroll or whoever those. Uh, workflow supervisors are in the system. So that is our goal. That's what we're working towards. I don't have an exact date on when we can complete this, but I'm happy to come back in every two weeks until it's done to give you a product or a status update. If you so choose.
Hey, is there any questions? I mean, I can't give an exact date of when it can implement that, but maybe a range like fifty days or, you know.
I can attempt to do that within a sixty day period. Um, the corrections can probably happen within that period. It's then making sure that we have the workflow and the supervisors. Uh, input into the system. So, um, we had an old, we're glad the departments, uh, last year. To give us a list of all of their supervisors. And once we have the current list of that, we can then implement those position numbers and grade the workflow. Um, so that the, at least the timesheet. Implementation can move forward. And we'll still have to test that too in the test environment to make sure that it's working properly and that it's going to the people that it's supposed to. So.
Yes, so had you have taken these trainings earlier, you could have been done within sixty days?
I, I would hope so. I would hope so. Yeah. Um, you don't know what you don't know. And so I feel like, uh, we're getting somewhere, it's making sense. And, you know, we're seeing the flow from beginning to end where we didn't have that before. We had huge gaps of information that we were missing. And so I feel like, uh, the new trainer at Tyler, I'm, I'm very pleased with. Um, she's been fantastic and has a lot of institutional knowledge about the project and I wish that we could have had someone like her from the beginning. But here we are.
Mr. Chairman, can I just maybe we have Regina come back like a month? I'll say every two weeks or a week. Too much pressure, but maybe in a month. Did you get an update?
After the twenty second training, because you won't have nothing to update till then.
Well, I mean, maybe, I mean, I could, I'd probably just tell you what the gap is at that point. But, um, I feel like maybe after the twenty second, because if we have issues that come up in between now and the twenty second. We can address those with the trainer at the time so that we can get those questions answered because you can, like. When you're doing an audit, it's kind of a trail and you follow the trail and then you find out there's something else that's missing. But we also have her email address too. So if we, you know, she's welcomed emails from us if we have questions along the way, we can reach out to her. And ask her, you know, hey, how do we fix this or why is it doing this? And she's, you know. She's more than happy to assist us in doing it as well.
I was thinking in terms of an update, uh, like there's a bunch of components to this.
Absolutely.
Um, email addresses for supervisors being one of them. You know, just, I don't know if you've got a pecking order, but you're attacking first, but just. Been a month to know, got this done or whatever that would be. We'll learn a lot more.
Yeah.
It's really hard to, you know, in, in front of you here now, just to condense, like just minimally, really what's all entailed in this. It's, it's complicated and, you know, and I, I keep saying that, but it's true. Um, you know, when you have records that are created early on in the very beginning. Um, you know, we had inexperience with this very, very large project and nobody had any idea. Of the magnitude that would be involved and the resources that you had to attach to that. And I don't think. I don't think that it was communicated in the beginning, uh, by the auditor to say, look, I need help with this. We've got to get someone to run this project, manage the project. And it was just outside of her realm and it's not her fault. It was a very big project. And I think we've just snowballed this from the very beginning. It was just, the magnitude was too large. And we couldn't, we couldn't apply the resources that were necessary at the time, unfortunately. And so here we are. Unfortunately, it's eight years later. So. Um.
Well, thank you.
All we can do is try and remedy it and fix it and move forward, you know? And that's, uh, that's what we're going to look for.
Thank you for your work and particularly for it. I want to thank you too. Uh, it kind of goes back. To the beginning, it sounds like to me Tyler really didn't help a whole lot. And. But anyway, thank you for what you've done and the research you've done and the direction you're moving.
It's hard. I mean, you know, they applied a trainer at the time, but again, you know, we've had trainings assigned to us. But if you don't have a system that's functionally working, I mean, we, we never had a complete training from the beginning. It was a start and stop and if, you know, in IT would have to work with Tyler and Tyler wouldn't communicate and, you know, there are a lot of just. If, if anything could go wrong, it did from the very beginning. I mean, the people who've stayed and toughed this out, it's been rough. And we're doing the best we can to try and mitigate that.
There wasn't even enough training for you to ask questions to know what you needed.
Part of our problem is the, you know. When it started, we didn't set it up. It was set up by another person and no fault of hers, right? She was trying to get things done and moving forward. But if we don't see something from start to finish from the Tyler implementation team. We don't know if we're setting it up right. So we. You know, in hindsight's twenty twenty, had we known what we know now, we wouldn't have done it that way. And so now we're just busy trying to clean up what has been done, fix it to the best of our ability, make sure that it's not going to interfere with current records. And current pay and move on.
Yes, Mr. Alval.
You know, you're right, Gina, you don't know what you don't know. And nobody knew what we were getting into when we first got this Tyler and that was, but anyway. And so here we are. It's been problem after problem after problem. People have just quit, retired, had health issues, et cetera, and just. So thank you for being one of the names that stood up for this because you've got to go back to someone. I know it's been overwhelming.
It's.
So very tough. Yes. And it has been brutal. And not so many kind of things have been said. So. Thank you for being here.
I get it. You know, I take my responsibility for this, for my role in it, you know, I get it. And I'm doing the best I can.
You are.
And trying to do everything else too. And it's a lot of responsibility.
So for clarification, it said there was seven hundred and something. And you've got six hundred and something done or six hundred and something left to do?
We have, we have six hundred and. We've, we've looked, it's, that was seven hundred thirty four, I have six hundred and thirty four left to do, or sorry, six hundred and.
So you did about one hundred.
Yeah, about, yes, that we've looked at.
Correct. And so let's go and think a couple of months to get this done. Maybe alternatively depending on how, how many reps.
I mean, well, I will dedicate my time. You know, the time that it takes between negotiations and, you know, if, if we need to assign other people to my, to my other workload. We still need to divvy that up in the C, with the CAO. And so. If I can get that done, then we can start working on concentrating on this and this will work. It's tough. I mean, there's nobody that can do my stuff.
And so. Of the old system, how much of this do you have to go back, the old system wasn't back then?
Oh, I don't use the old system at all. We are completely a hundred percent in Tyler.
So you're out of, you don't have.
I have my own legacy system with all of our employee information. That again, it's also not being maintained anymore because the software is so old and the programming is so old too. And it has some institutional information that we're not going to get anywhere else either. That's the problem we, we run into with all of these software programs. They're only good so long and they're only updated so long and software companies come and go. Um, but I don't use the legacy system.
Is yours backed up so you don't have the same problem that the auditor has?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But why wasn't the other system backed up? I answered the question earlier and it wasn't really answered. Do you have an answer for that?
I don't think it, it's not that it wasn't backed up. It's just that, you know, technology has advanced. And it's old technology. I mean, it's a DOS based system. Eventually it's going to be obsolete and that's what we were facing. You know, you can back it up so much, but you know, technology exceeds.
Is that it? That's it. This was.
One of the things I've seen is that you can back it up. But if you don't have a current program to do the back.
To read it, to read.
Doesn't do any good. You don't have any information on the disk. You don't have a program that operates to open up that backup, which is what happened here. So they could have had all the backups in the world.
which is what happened here, so they could have had all the backups in the world.
Right.
So if you have a backed up on an eight-track CD.
No.
I know you're a drummer. Four track, alright, four track. Now.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
No. Thank you.
Okay, um, are are you the uh personnel uh director?
I am not.
Who is that?
The CAO is the director. I am an analyst.
Okay. So Lori's the personnel director?
That is correct.
And when uh, when this system was uh was purchased, uh, were were you involved with the uh, with the uh purchasing team that that that's on there?
So I was in a different role in the CAO's office and I was the administrative assistant under the CAO.
Okay.
And so there was an RFP that was issued for that project. Um, you know, I didn't sit on the 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 selection committee, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
We had demonstrations from uh two vendors, I believe, at the time that, or maybe three. One was outrageous, um, and then there was, uh, there was one other besides Tyler that was in and around the same ballpark. But I had nothing to do with the selection process.
So when, when did you uh, when did you take on the Tyler project, what year?
It wasn't, well, so right when I took on the role as the analyst in twenty eighteen, that's when Tyler was coming on board. And so from that period on, moving forward, yeah, um, I had been a part of that as it relates to the HR module.
So you were just, you were an analyst in there?
Yeah.
And and so who, who was your?
The CAO is, was still the director at that time.
Okay, so when, when Tyler um, when Tyler implemented the training, so what, how did they, how did they do that? Uh, how did they give you that information? Did they just show up one day and uh say, hey, here we are and uh, and and let's dig into it? How, how did that all work?
So the auditor's office was the project manager, if you will. Um, they, you know, they accepted the project. And the auditor assigned the staff to that based on, you know, okay, so let me back up. The Tyler program was implemented a little backwards, and I think I've had this conversation before. Um, it started because the payroll system, which was separate from the gen-led system, our our legacy system, it was a standalone program that they were using to pay everybody. That system was was no no longer going to be supported by uh the software group that had created. And so that kind of kickstarted, you know, hey, you know, our gen-led system is is, you know, old and ancient, we need to upgrade. Um, and we'd like to be able to pull in the payroll side as well so that departments can have information available all in one system rather than having them separate. So it's kind of a backwards way to start a project when you have a general-led system that you're starting with the payroll side first. It should always begin with your general ledger, HR, and then your payroll is usually last. So we implemented it backwards from the beginning, which, you know, I mean, it's not ideal and we've struggled from that period forward. Now, Gen Led has finally caught up, um, and, you know, the HR module has been stuck in the middle. Now, the training was implemented through a project manager, so we have a project manager, Tyler. And there was a project manager of uh Tyler in the auditor's office, which was uh Lori, the former former assistant auditor. So she was assigned by Diana to take on this project. And so she would then send out emails, you know, depending on what the training was at the time. Um, and we would either attend if we could or not. And so that's.
And why, why, why wouldn't you attend?
So, I mean, I can't always be at the trainings on their selected dates. If I have other obligations, if I'm sick, if I got a vacation planned, I mean, it's, if the, there's only one, so, you know, the other person left in our office at the time was Belinda, which means she would have to do everything else. If, we just didn't have enough resources to spread it. So I attempted to do all the trainings that I could when I was available and do my regular job.
And and did you ever express it to the CAO that uh that you needed more help?
We had irregular meetings about the status. And so, you know, I broke down, you know, where we were, what we were struggling with at those, at those times. Um.
And and what was, what was the response?
There wasn't really any response. I just broke it down and that's kind of where it was left.
So, so when you, when you missed those trainings, would you think that you should, uh, you know where that module was and what you needed to work on? And um, would you ever uh continue to work on those projects? And then get back to Tyler and say, I'm, I'm ready, or or how did that work?
No, so Tyler, their training, uh, their training model was they had all of these trainings sequentially, ready to go. And their object is to get the trainings done, check the box, move on to the next training, check the box, and move on to the next training. The difficulty is because we started backwards with payroll and we hadn't initiated general ledger. We had a disconnect between the HR module and the payroll module. Nothing was connecting, so even in our test environments when we were doing trainings, we couldn't complete a training. Then we had trainers that were like, uh, I need to read up on this and I need to talk to my manager. And our trainings were never successful. They were never complete. We had one training in four years that actually we saw from beginning to end. That was it. And so there was a struggle on the IT side with connections. There was a struggle with our trainer, who I don't think we had very knowledgeable trainees in the be, in the beginning. And they weren't able to just come in and fix something and move forward because there were, uh, I guess, checkboxes in the background, the programming hadn't been finished yet. So it's been a very tough road to deal with. And so you become frustrated, you're sitting in trainings, you're, you're, you know, ready to go, and it's a start and stop and you can't go any further. And those things, you know, we couldn't connect, we couldn't fix. Those had to be done between Tyler and our project manager and our IT staff.
And and so, so our IT staff, when, when you came upon a problem, they couldn't give you an answer of what was going on?
But that was, so we were given very specific roles, which, you know, our project manager at the time was the assistant auditor. That person connected directly with Tyler. We were never given a one-eight-hundred number, it's broke, you know, to fix these things. We were directed to give our uh issues to our project manager. That person was then assigned to speak with the project manager, Tyler. We had no connection to Tyler directly at all.
And when you wouldn't get an answer in in a reasonable amount of time, then then you would just let it go?
We just moved on, I mean, you know, we can't fix the items in, you know, that is broken and that we can't fix. And so, you know, I, I mean, I, I understand that, you know, that happens at the time, you know.
That you can't do that, but, but when, but when I ask somebody a question and don't get an answer back, um, I, I just, I I'm I'm trying to to grasp where, why we're here where we are.
Sure.
And uh, that, that when you don't get a reasonable response in a reasonable amount of time, why would we not ask the question again and again and again?
Those questions were consistently asked. If we had a s- a stopping point, we couldn't move forward. You know, now we, we get a response that I've already sent that to Tyler, I've already sent that to Tyler. We don't know, we don't know what that interaction is, you know, so we don't have that connection. We can't verify that information. And so then what? We're just kind of stuck and it just sits in the room until somebody says, okay, it's fixed. Or, you know, you're checking, hey, is this done? No, I'll come back. So.
Okay, yeah, because Tyler uh claims that they have a um, a system that, uh, priority one, priority two, um, that, to uh, that, that when you guys were supposed to fill in a claim ticket and that, that they would respond within a, there are twenty-four hour period, uh, one week period or a one month period.
Sure.
They, they have that in their contract. So, um, you know, I, I just, I, it, it just baffles me that that we're back here using Tyler again. When they had, when they set up with us and they had a priority system of twenty-four hours, you know, one week, one month, that they were supposed to get back. And so, and, and then Steph doesn't follow up. You know, um, you know, in uh January of two thousand and twenty-nine, we were supposed to be going live with uh the payroll system. And uh, and and here we are, we're, we're not.
Well, the payroll system is live, so, and the HR system is live. But the the difficulty is.
So it it's up and and fully working, we.
No, I'm just saying, but it's, I'm just saying it's right. I'm not saying it isn't dysfunctional. There are some problems that we're trying to fix, which is what we needed, you know, Tyler's assistance with or client first assistance with, somebody who could tell us, you know, let's go through and and let's go through the process. What are we missing here because this isn't working? And so now, um, you know, Client First helped us up to a certain point until their trainer became unavailable. And so now we decided, you know, Cheyenne, I had Cheyenne reach out to, uh, you know, Tyler to see, hey, okay, do we have any trainers available there? Just to, you know, see if our resources have changed. And, you know, with, we were lucky enough to get the recent trainer who's very knowledgeable and, you know, can start from A to Z and we're very happy with that.
Okay, well, um, previously you were kind of, there was a communication link.
Sure.
And you're reaching out to a project manager. Uh, who's the project manager now and do you have the same communication?
So that still lies, well, right now that was assigned to IT, what, two years ago? And so that's our project manager and, um, and she assists, of course, Nancy in the auditor's office for those.
So, so you have this resolved, you have ready access?
Yes, now we do, absolutely, yeah, and I, I reach out to Cheyenne when we need stuff. We, we talk about what our options are and, you know, try to get those resolved.
All right.
Yes. How many trainings does the HR department went to in the last two years as far as getting Tyler in from there?
So I don't know the exact amounts. Um, it depended on availability, trainer and myself. Uh, that could have been, you know, at once every couple of weeks in a non-payroll period. It could have been once every couple of months, depending on schedules.
You previously mentioned that it's either you or Belinda, that's basically what what you guys have to work with. Uh, one or the other would have to attend these trainings and they're, you know, whether you're sick or vacation or what have you. But the only issue I'm seeing is that department holding up the full implement implementation with Tyler, well, it seems like that department needs to put on the back burner. This has been going on for seven years. Seems like, well, if there's only Belinda left, eight, excuse me, if it's only Belinda left or you left, uh, somebody needs to attend those trainings, because now we're now being held up from basically HR department not finishing up with Tyler. So then this was under the previous CAO that just you told, hey, it was just either me or Belinda or what have you. And uh, he said, okay, or how did that work? It just, just excused from going to the training or?
No, no, I mean, the training part was not the issue. We're talking about a timeframe of trying to initiate, uh, you know, from a limited training that we had to try and fix those irregularities in those seven hundred and thirty-four records. And it just wasn't successful because we didn't have all the answers that we needed. And so, you know, you can't implement something that you don't know what you're missing. And so those were the, you know, the limited conversations that we had with CAO on status was, you know, basically, here's where we are.
And between this last training that you just had with Tyler, you had uh seven hundred and thirty-four records and now you're down to six hundred and thirty-three records that need to be implemented in one training?
No, this was from the the second training that we had from there until this, so we, we had one on the thirteenth. And we had another one on the twenty-fifth yesterday. And so from that period until yesterday, we just been steadily trying to break it down. Um, and then I had a panel meeting last week, so, but it was during the payroll season, couldn't do anything until this week.
So basically, we won't have a good update from HR until after the twenty seconds, so the board being on the twenty-third, we should have something good.
Yeah, I'm happy to bring back an update, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Regina.
So, so moving forward, when we uh, when we hired Client First, did they, did they provide you with a uh, with with a training schedule of of what days that uh you were to be in? Uh, the HR department was to be in training?
So we would schedule out based on the trainer's schedule. Um, a couple of schedules, sometimes three. And there was a a a gap depending on scheduling changes. And so it wasn't always very consistent, but I tried to get to each and every one that I could. Um, I didn't attend all of them or I had to reschedule.
So, so how, what's the timeframe that they gave you um, on their dates? Did, when, when uh, when the schedule was, how, how was that given to you?
So it had to be played by ear because we didn't know until we dive in exactly what we're missing, how many records there were and how many problems there were. So it was, you know, we scheduled out a few meetings at a time and we'd go in and then, you know, based on that, there would be, you know, a look at, um, you know, the the trainer would get a a list for me of like, the, they, so, we had a trainer and then we had someone from Client First that actually did a, an audit of the systems to see where we were deficient in some of those records. So that, from that list, then myself and the trainer would go through and try to then audit each one of those records. Um, so some of those records were complicated because there, when you have them tied to people, you have a lot of records to go through if they've been here the entire time that Tyler was implemented. So eight years were the records, you got to go through and make sure everything is closed. All, all these are date-driven, so your dates have to be closed before you have a next record. Some of those were not left open, you know, or unclosed, which then has an effect on future, you know, iterations in the payroll. So it takes time and so we couldn't just go in and um automatically make all these sweeping changes in one training. So you have to go through systematically through each and every one of those forty's. And so it took longer. And so until they could evaluate how long it was going to take and then, you know, project that out into the trainings, it didn't finish.
So, so they just randomly gave you a a training day?
No, we agreed on a training day based on the trainer's schedule and myself and in a non-payroll week. And then you tried to make that a consistent training day for, you know, every other week.
And so they never gave you a a a year list? It was, uh, it was a day to day list?
Correct, or a period of time. And then from that period of time, we would create another set of dates. Because they didn't know how long it was going to take. So you have your your training. We make that determination, okay, so how long did this take? It's not going to be, you know, we're not going to have this finished by the next training period. So then it's, you know, we'll set up another, you know, set of dates thereafter. And so that's how it went. It was, you know, as we progressed or didn't progress.
So when when they scheduled those things, did you, did you, uh, tell them whether you're, you couldn't do it because of payroll week?
We'd already, yeah, they told me that they could, we could do it during a payroll week.
Okay.
And so then we scheduled them in off payroll weeks.
So you scheduled them all in off payroll weeks where you could have been there?
Yes, if, yeah, if I didn't have obligations somewhere else or if I wasn't sick or, you know, out of the office.
Or Belinda couldn't a- attend those scheduled ones?
So.
That was there.
She she in hindsight probably could have, again, but trying to finish her job too. And when a non payroll week for payroll, that's an HR week for us. We still have, you know, payroll actions. We then have to start preparing for the next following pay period. So it's, it's, you know, it may not be a payroll week, you know, where they're processing payroll and people are getting paid. But on the HR side, those weeks were actually inputting all the payroll action forms. And so, you know, staffs. So Belinda puts inputs all of those in those off payroll weeks. So then I attend the trainings so that she can complete her job too. Because there's a lot of work to be done. People have to get paid.
Well, yeah, but but you were saying that that they scheduled you purposely because they didn't want you to do it on a payroll week. And and did you ever indicate to them that, no, even even on off uh, payroll weeks, we can't attend your trainings? Or how did that work?
No, because we can still input the HR actions in a non payroll week. That's just so long as we're not proving them posted. They can, they can sit in a queue, all of these actions. But we had a lot of actions and we've had a lot of board actions. M L U increases and salary increases and health insurance changes. All of those things require their own each payroll action. So one form for every little thing times, you know, all of our employees. And so it's a lot to process, which is why we needed the extra help that we got Jen for in our office to help Belinda alleviate and cut that in half. But it still doesn't alleviate my responsibilities because those things, you know, I can't delegate down to to Jen. She's still learning, she's still learning Tyler. It took us eight years to get where we are. She had never had any experience in that until.
So so but but you knowing the job and and you know that that there's salary increases, negotiation, uh, hiring and everything. And then, and I I'm not, I'm not following, um, you know, when when you're still supposed to meet, uh, this obligation to be trained so that it will help you. And and you know that all of this stuff is there. Why, why wouldn't you tell Client First? Well, I I just can't, I can't do it, uh, because I have all all of this other stuff. I I'm not able to to get this system up and running or or tell the C O that we're not, uh, that I can't get this system up and running because because I have all all of this stuff. And but I have agreed to, uh, to work with Client First or Tyler on off payroll days. But how how does that process work?
It's not, obviously, you know, I'm struggling. I got a big load on my shoulders and trying to work through it, you know? I I don't have any other answers for that. Just try plugging through and trying to get it on, trying.
And and why, I mean, why wouldn't you come to the board and and ask for for help? Because.
Because that's not my role, Tom. I am not a director.
Okay, so.
To you directly as a department head, because that's, that's not my role. That would be the director's role. And, you know, I've been put in this position a lot where this responsibility has been placed on me that I think should be measured out. You know, it's, it's too much for one person. And I I don't want to be in an acting director role. That's, that's not what I get paid to do. You know, I mean, if the if the hierarchy is changed and, you know, you talk about, uh, maybe revamping how that personnel department runs, that is, you know, your all's decision. And all I all I can say is I've been doing the best that I can for all these years and it's wearing, it's very wearing. And, you know, we have a new C O now. He's trying to get up to speed too. So anyway, that's what we said.
Yeah, I just want to say, I know how busy you are. You're busy on payroll week and you're busy on on the other week. And you're trying to squeeze something else in. And it almost sounds like somebody wants to blame you for something. And I guarantee you, it's not your fault. And I just want to make that perfectly clear because I see how overwhelmed those three ladies are. And they, I tell you what, they're more than busy. They're more than busy every day of the week. It's not like they're killing killing time or anything else. And I want to thank you for what you do squeeze in. And I really appreciate it. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
And I talked to somebody else who's familiar with the the training through Tyler. And what they kind of expressed was that the training was totally inept and a waste of time. And so much as busy as you are, I can imagine not looking forward to wasting your time and when you got so many other things going on. But appreciate your help very much.
Yes.
I just kind of want to add on to that. You know, the Tyler training has been terrible. And at one of the, after we got Nancy on for the auditor, then we got Client First to come in and help out. That's when the ball started rolling. And a lot of this stuff, like Regina was saying earlier, it was in the lockbox where there was no, the previous auditors weren't asking for it. They're an elected position, so you can't force them to do anything other than to the budget thing with the financial, you can't make them do anything. And that's where we were stuck. And we couldn't force them to do anything. And so people like Regina were left, although we put her in the request department, but they can't do anything else. They're left holding the bag. Finally, when the new auditor, Nancy, come in, we got help and now that started to ball over. And I thank Nancy for being the first one to raise her hand saying, hey, I can't do this alone. We need help. You know, Richard finally got Jason in there on the I T to help get the ball rolling and help this thing get started. Now Cheyenne has taken over and then the phenomenally job. And it takes all these people to make this thing work. It isn't just a one office program. It takes multiple, what do you call them, one, whatever. Anyway, you guys have been built. And so, anyway, it's just hard. I mean, yeah, Regina, I mean, you're you're one of the few. I mean, that's why we got, Richard got Jen over there finally. They didn't know that there was a problem over there for a couple of years and never got anything. But we're just so limited on staffing and funding and other. It's harder and it just puts more and more pressure on on the other staff. And so anyway, so so thank you for Regina for sticking this out. And I hope you don't turn into a resignation. Anyway, it it's just tough. I think we're, we'll finally get something going. We're almost there, but it's just, it's been a very painful arduous eight years to say the least. It's been painful.
Okay, Maury wanted to.
I just, uh, want to comment that since, um, I've been the C O, I've, of course, um, wanted no more than you folks to get this behind us and get, uh, fully functioning. And, um, I think Regina brought up some good points that, you know, it's, it's all in there. It's, we're live, um, but there's just a lot of double checking essentially. The the records have to be right or it's garbage in and garbage out. And, um, that is largely a component of time management. And I think that it would be a pity to not recognize, uh, what Regina does on a day to day basis. Um, in my evaluation of the personnel department, um, there's too much on her plate. Um, so we're working and trying to figure out how to get that stuff delegated into other people so that she can get a, the hyper focused on this and get this behind us and start getting Tyler to function. I mean, that, that's where I'm, uh, I'm looking at. And, um, I think it's beneficial to go through this and like look how we got here. Um, because this is not a failure, uh, just with, uh, Tyler in terms of, you know, going out, finding the software, buying the software, implementing the software. We have this with, uh, Megabyte over in, you know, the accessories department, not talking to SmartCo, which is over in planning. And I think what that, uh, really, uh, represents is a systemic, a systemic problem of, uh, the county not understanding what softwares are being implemented and how they're going to work with each other and what the ease or, uh, challenges are of implementing new software. Because, you know, we had the same problem in SmartCo. You know, you can do all this stuff. That's great. We get it, they give it to us, they walk away, we don't know how it works. We went through a a micro version of this, um, but had to get trainers and, you know, go revisit the 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 thing in the first place. And, um, now it still doesn't talk to Megabyte, which is ridiculous, you know? And, uh, so I think that, uh, going forward, we should look at policies for, um, uh, purchasing and implementing softwares, uh, so that we're not getting this position in the future, which I'm sure we will, because all this stuff runs a lifetime or its lifetime. And then you're, you got to redo it or you got to do something different. Um, but certainly back to Regina, um, you know, a given day in Regina's life is an emergency. You know, this person hit that person. It's like being a principal. And, uh, you know, and now she's got five investigations that she's juggling. And so her, um, schedule, like I say, I there. Above and beyond what an analyst should be doing. And so I'm looking hard at all this stuff and I hope to come back to you with, uh, different solutions. Um, I don't even know if it says anything about me being a personnel director in my job description, but I know I sign all that stuff. Um, but I think we should take a long, hard look at personnel. And we've got, obviously, we added a person to the mix. Um, I think right now you could probably use two more. And I don't mean two more people that are just, you know, going to come in and not know anything. Like, we need two more people with Regina's, uh, background and expertise in the categories that she works in, which are vast. I mean, she's here in front of you with pers and redoing the tables and, you know, and claims. And it's like, you know, I mean, she's essentially doing the job of personnel, uh, director. Um, and she's been holding my hand, uh, getting through my first initial months of being a C O. And so I commend her. I I know that you're frustrated, you're all frustrated, I'm frustrated, everybody is. Um, but I think that for the first time, I see, when I asked her the the first meeting on the 13th with the trainer, you know, actually saw her smile and say, yeah, this is, this person's answering the questions um, that I'm asking. And same thing with, um, the last one. And so I think that's a departure right there from what she's been getting over, whatever, eight years, eight months, whatever. Um, it's never seemed like the information that that they need and I'm speaking to them and I wasn't there. But it's, it's like there was such a major disconnect in where they are at and what they're trying to understand that just progress was just, you know, stifled. So, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, getting this done as much as anybody. And like I say, I think Regina, um, for the first time feels like she sees daylight. And, uh, I think we can do it. Let's just get focused on it and get it done. And I'm going to work with, uh, all the people in personnel to get anything and everything off our table there I can, uh, in the coming weeks and months so that we can get to a place where it's functioning and we're satisfied.
Well, thank you. I I'm going to compliment you on on one of your comment compliments because I hope that the rest of the board heard. And I have been against the the C O being the personnel director because all it is is a figurehead and she's not getting any help. And that's why we need a personnel director. And and, you know, so, I mean, I hope you guys heard what Maury said because that's what we need to achieve so that, you know, either make Regina a personnel director and then and and then hire below her. But, you know, that that's what that personnel director in the C O's, uh, realm has been. It's just a figurehead. She's not getting any help from the C O. And so I hope you guys heard that and and that during this budget season, we can give her some help. And I know because I do my homework, Regina. I've called all, I've called a bunch of other counties. And I know, I know from every one of them that that's told me that that the type, whether they went with Tyler or some other accounting system, that it was very hard and very difficult for for, uh, staff to implement. And and so, you know, I I know that 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 you've been working hard. But also, um, the last time you were here, I asked you, and maybe Maury didn't hear me, but I asked, how can this board help you achieve getting this project done? And as far as I know, it was crickets because because you're not getting the help that you need. The auditor's office, they they got to hire more staff. You know, and and you need to, uh, be able to, uh, train, you know, train people to take your place because you're not going to be here forever. And we need somebody that can step up and 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 take your place some someday like what Nancy was able to achieve. So, you know, I mean, I hope you guys really heard that because Maury, you're right on the right on for that. And, uh, so, you know, my frustration is is this system has taken eight years. And and it's not up and running. At the tune of $1.5 million we're at right now. And me and the rest of the taxpayers want to know when, when our investment is going to be completed and done. And I think, I think, you know, we have every right to expect that. You know, and and if there's string opportunities that that come on, I don't know why, why they were canceled in the past. You know, you, the trainers set up more than two weeks or or a month in advance uh, and what modules they were going to discuss and why we didn't follow through and and get that trained. You know, I I don't know the rest of the board, but I would hope that you guys would expect the same thing is that when the company sets up and they're probably charging us. Well, I'm done. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you again.
You know, 23rd.
23rd.
23rd, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to H five.
Heather Holland, Deputy County Administrative Officer. I'm just here to provide a quick update for you guys on the budget. We're moving along. We have entry largely done. We're just waiting on some corrections and some budgets from our departments. One special district budget before we can completely finish during that. We will be running a gauntlet again this year for budget hearing or budget committee meetings. I'm looking at doing it all in one week again. We'll have each department slotted out. But by doing all this work upfront, all we're gonna be really talking about is what the requests are and where we're gonna need to cut the balance. And then lastly, I'm working on or I'm waiting on fund balances from the auditor's office. As you know, the year is closed. So we're making transfers back and settling stuff, making sure that money was supposed to be moved where it was supposed to go last year. Before we get good fa- fund balances to balance off of this year. And then we'll be back. We're hoping to take the budget on September twenty third. With the thirtieth, that is like a fallback if we needed to call a special meeting for whatever it's been. You guys have any questions for me?
So, when are we gonna come to the board?
The twenty third.
You're gonna go all over it one day?
We're gonna do a lot of budget meetings prior to that, hopefully. So we'll have a lot of those conversations in those budget committee meetings as opposed to having it as much in the hearing. The hearing's going to be more of like where we were, what cuts we made. This is what our budgets look like. So most of that should be done. This conversation should already be had. And we encourage the board to present to participate in those meetings prior to. So that there's a little bit more of a informal back and forth with the department heads to really understand what their requests are. And then to be able to come back and present exactly to the to the public what our budget is, why we did it, what we have in it. And make sure that it's all squared away.
Yes, Mark. Um those budget meetings, do you have those kind of dialed out on the calendar yet so we can kind of know if we can make it? Because I like to be at those.
Yeah, I I don't have them yet per se. I'm just, we're just working on calendar stuff. I would like to do them the second and third weeks of uh September. Really with all the work being done in the second week and just coming back for final summary and cuts on the uh the third the third week.
Are you thinking like a couple hours a day on those days?
Well, they'll be full day.
Full day?
Yep, we'll bring those departments in and we'll try to spend full days with them. Get all of their requests so that we can get as much done in one time and then be able to come back and have those conversations again and be done.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Sam.
So your goal is to um, I'm sorry. You had your hand up. No, no, that was rude of me and you go.
Well, I look at the calendar, September seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth. I personally won't be here because that's R C R C.
Yeah.
And hopefully the C E O gets to go down to that for part of that as well.
I'm hoping we don't need to go into that third week at all. We just have it open if we needed to.
Okay, that's good. My other question is, if you're gonna have your budget committee meetings, it's only been two superiors in the past. Because if you have one or two there, well, then it's an open public meeting. So then why do you have to have one or three in the past? So, I mean, that that's my other question. That's why I was asking if you're gonna have a regular budget committee meetings. And have an extended one out after that, the twenty third, twenty fourth, it could be for the full board.
You guys could request whatever you'd like. I am just at the service of the board.
I would prefer something like that, to have a regular budget committee meeting. And then come back with twenty third, twenty fourth, you know, extend it out after that with full board and full public. That's how I see it working better, other than to have, otherwise you're gonna have to have public meetings and I can't remember what makes it fall so.
And you guys are more than welcome to run a larger, a longer public hearing if that's what you guys wanna do. The cuts to make those cuts are really difficult to go back every single night and try to balance again. So if we're waiting to take a good amount of our requests or a big amount of our changes to that drop dead date. Then it's really gonna uh limit our abilities to work with that. So we would, our staff would go back all night long, which I'm already doing. And sit there and have to try to go balance the budget and reprint everything so that it's readily available to the public. So that's why we tended not to do the longer hearings and try to do more of that process in the budget committee meetings. To my understanding, our misnomer of only two board members being able to come might not be true. So we're looking into that and hopefully we can have all the board members present for the uh budget committee meetings that are publicly noticed meetings. And they would have to, the other three that are not part of the meeting would have to more come and be kind of passive observer observers, I'm sure. But they would still be able to hear the information and the back and forth.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, probably one year. That was just my thought.
Sorry, Tom. That was, but um my my thought is that I want all five of us in there. Uh there's there's at least three of us here that want to be involved with the budget hearings. We we haven't been involved in it. Uh and it's time that we are all involved in it. And so that we can go through and hear. It's gonna be long. And um, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't want it to be where that you have to. Rebalance the budget every single night if if there was some way to do that. But obviously, I don't know because I've never been involved with that. And so, but it's it's time that that this board sees. You know, where are the money, what the requests are and and how we're going to uh move forward. That's my request.
Definitely. The budgets take a ten day noticing period. So if we are not able to have all the board members in the budget in the budget committee here or meetings. Then we could always run the hearing starting on the sixteenth.
Hey, get out your phones and shine it on Sam.
Right. So if we uh if we wanna do that, we could potentially do a public meeting. Thank you, spotlight. We could potentially do a public hearing on the sixteenth and recess and come back on the twenty third if we needed to. So we can in this admin office kind of play around with those ideas and then make you guys aware of what we can do.
I have a question. Say we say all of us can't be there. Can we can we set it up for the supervisor if we can't be there? Can we listen in on it? Do they understand it better?
I've seen other people do Zoom before and I.
I don't care for Zoom, but that's better.
Potentially look at that. It would be more teams for us, but we could definitely pursue that as well. And we'll also have a budget committee meeting minutes that people could read and catch up on as well.
So more than two supervisors are gonna be there, it's a notice. So there's so participating remotely, we have to abide by those.
Okay, thank you.
They'd be reported as well. The lower the supervisor can watch it if they can't make it at that very time.
Yeah, I think that it would be a good idea to have the meetings in here. And utilize the owl or Zoom or Teams or whatever. Um in the past, the our conference room has really been tight. And so I don't want that to be an issue as well as we have the best opportunity to have different options. Depending on how we wanna do it from this room. I like it here.
We just need to look into the standards of things to make sure that we're in compliance.
Thank you very much.
So so we uh go staff direction. I need our.
Just receive the report.
I know, but uh but I wanna, I don't wanna to uh come back uh on on the ninth. And and we not have a uh decision that that we want. Or I want, I wanted to be involved with all of the budget hearings.
And you let's uh let's make a distinction between budget committee meetings and budget hearings. Um you want us to be involved in it, but.
Yes, yeah, I want I want to hear from the departments and and what their budget is. How how do they receive that money, uh how it's spent? And uh what, you know, and any shortfalls or or whatever that that's gonna take place. I want I want all of that information.
Well, that's good, Sam.
But, you know, you guys, you guys did it before, you know, that that's fine. But I haven't been involved and I wanna be.
I know, but I'm I'm just saying, just for clarification, everything. So Sam and Maury can explain how we've done it in the past. We just had a budget meeting. And then we come back to the full board. We're talking about a budget hearing. And so if you guys can discern the difference for the rest of the board in the budget hearing and a budget committee of what what is being proposed.
The budget committee meetings are the means that we're required to have prior to passing the budget. So it's where we do a lot of that work. It's where we have a lot of those conversations. We talk about cutting presentations, that type of stuff. Though that is then formalized in a formal budget hearing that we hold in the Board of Supervisors room.
So the making of the sausage has traditionally been the uh budget committee. And so that's where the department head comes in, explains their budget, uh asks for what they ask. Or uh identifies what they're going to cut if it's a cutting year. And um ultimately, that budget through that committee gets forwarded to this full body, full body. Uh so that they can pass a budget. And some years, there's been three supervisors that were very comfortable with this process. And other years, not so much. And there's been all kinds of iterationally to tell you how this works, but that's what Aaron just had. Uh I believe it's chairman.
Vice chairman.
And all the departments.
And all the departments come in on their scheduled days to go over their budget. Some take, you know, fifteen minutes and others like the sheriff's department or public works takes considerably longer.
And other departments is gonna ask questions to go to the department.
Our department is actually did not like having to present in one in front of one another. And they requested that this year that they present on their own, in their own slots, which we are obliging to.
One of the options that you're proposing this year is to have a budget caring process with each individual slot time slaughter.
No, the budget committee process with each of them time slotting.
But to have the public hearing for all the students, yeah.
We would like them to come to the committee as well.
Okay.
We just were under the impression that that was not allowed. And so we're making finding a perfect issue.
Unless you notice it as a regular meeting.
Right.
And I think the paradigm, and I'm just speaking as chairman. I think what the paradigm, the uh chairman nearly is suggesting is maybe that we start public hearings. Beginning of the month and have a perpetual meeting um until it's time to vote. It's that way that the whole board is listening to the department head and the proposed budget. And then at the end, they make a decision on the budget. And I'm just guessing that's what his desire is.
Yes, so um that's what that's what I want. But it's also been a commitment from from the. Because it's right now, it's only Gary and I that can attend the meeting. So Jason, do you wanna attend?
Absolutely.
Aaron, do you wanna attend the meetings?
I do.
Okay, Mike, do you wanna attend the meetings?
I'd like to, yes.
Gary, do you wanna attend the meetings? Okay, so. So however, however that looks, there's four of us that would like to be in the budget.
But what are you gonna call budget hearings if that's the way that's gonna go? Not gonna call it committee.
But two, I wanna make sure that I'll I'll. I will, I will be there regardless of of whatever my schedule is. But, you know, just for staff's sake, I wanna make sure that we're committed to that. So that if if we only have to have a budget uh committee that we're there. But as long as we're all four of us are committed to that.
I have, it's in September and I have a pretty full schedule. But I I plan on being to everything I can. Uh I've got to do C S A.
I know, but if you can't, then then that's why I'm saying that let's make sure that. We're not overboarding the staff. I I I don't want that.
I'll get with you, Sam, and show you my schedule. How's that?
Well, I think it's it it this is why there's a couple of ways to skin a cat. This is not a uncommon problem that uh people are, you know, very busy in September and doing things. And so this is why this this option of a committee with two um supervisors versus the whole complement um is a thing. Um so if you're committed to being there, um we can commit to being there. And I mean, really, it's essentially the same process for uh Sam and staff to go through these uh pitches by the department heads. It's just under the different um header of committee versus hearing.
Well, you have to have a forum.
And you have to have a forum, that's true. And no matter what, when we get to the end of the month, like Sam said, we're we wanna try to get this done on the twenty third. So if there's, you know, if we have a couple failed meetings, we're still gonna, the twenty third's still gonna come.
Hi. Well, Sam, just for clarification, you're talking about the eighth to the twelfth and maybe the following week. If the eighth and the twelfth is the uh committee meetings, then uh what do you propose for the hearings?
I was gonna do the twenty third, but we could start on the sixteenth if we wanted to. And then we could recess and come back on the twenty third to finalize.
Okay, or could that committee uh the hearing, if it needed to flow into like a special meeting on the seventeenth or eighteenth?
Well, just just for the record, R C R C is seventeen, eighteen, nineteenth. I know Aaron will be there. I'm slighted to be myself.
Okay. Thank you.
You should adopt the budget at a regular.
Which hopefully will be the twenty third.
So the so that eight through the twelfth, we'll we'll have those those meetings.
Yes.
Or hearings or.
Hearings.
Hearing.
We'll start the budget.
We'll start budget hearings on September eighth.
Well, we can't do the hearings on the eighth because that requires ten day noticing, but we could start. So this is where it's getting confusing. Committee meetings are just two. It's a publicly noticed meeting, but we only have two supervisors that. That allows us to just do the normal agenda posting that we would like we do for this meeting. If we wanted to start hearings, hearings are a ten day notice requirement that's going to make us start as early as the sixteenth. And we could have those committee meetings be an um or that those hearings before however many days we needed to do that. It would roll into special meetings. So if we want everybody there, we need to hold hearings and it's going to be pretty much a week long of this exact meeting with this level of noticing. If we don't do the more informal committee meetings.
So if we gotta notice them.
Meetings aren't they seventy two hours?
But the budget requires a ten day notice period for people to be able to comment and read.
So it's not just a matter of getting the notices. It's what it gets, a matter of having the information available.
Yes, that is what our notice says. So the board, which is wishes to do the hearings instead of the committee meetings, that's fine. We just have to notice appropriately.
So we wouldn't start it until the sixteenth? Is that right?
If we were going to a regular meeting, yes.
A hearing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I meant the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. But yes, a hearing would start, have to start on the sixteenth. We'd be pretty close on the night.
About on the tenth, because we'd start on the and then go through.
If you guys are allowed to call a special meeting if they use those shoes.
Yeah.
Is it reasonable to think we can get through all of it like one day?
I mean, our budget hearings are really long and by then we've pretty much made all the changes. So I I just don't know. I don't know how quickly it would go. You have department heads that are gonna be unavailable for preexisting uh this, you know, this is the problem is trying to schedule so many people at one time. You have department heads that are going to be unavailable for pre-existing, uh, this, you know, this is the problem is trying to schedule so many people at one time. Uh, we have department heads that might be out during that time. We might have department heads that, uh, are in court. I mean, we do have a working D A, so she's quite often in court, which makes it very difficult to get her into a room, which is why we normally do it in a week to be able to. Give her some leeway with that.
Oh, no, it's, it's.
Uh, so it will just be based on staffing and who can show up and how many people you'll have there and then how much discussion we want to have.
Is it possible to get general fund done in one day and then H H S on a separate day? Or is that reasonable?
H S S largely stands out by itself with the exception of four units that do get general fund contribution. So they're pretty easy to balance. It's the general fund and the public safety departments that are hard, the hardest to balance. Because if either, if the general fund's doing well and public safety's in the hole, the general fund's giving money. So it's, that's a very delicate balance. Because they're so, are so in a shrine. Uh, but. We could definitely try. We're just still really waiting on those fund balances. So I can't balance anybody until I know exactly how much money we have in the bank. So I know exactly how much we need from each place.
So I think it's easy to turn it, we spent too many. You guys go ahead and have this. Then we have an extended budget hearing on the twenty third and. It's planned on the twenty third and twenty fourth to give the department heads if they can, we go on Tuesday, we can deal with twenty fourth. Just have a senior budget caring process to ask about that. And then if you actually supervise your office, maybe you.
Yeah, somebody wants to go. I, 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 last name.
Sorry.
I have to agree with your Baron on this because of the timeframe and. There's some of the meetings I can't make. Mike, if you want to go to my place, I welcome you to it.
You know, but once again, you know, it, it boils down to every year. October first, we gotta have this budget done.
Oh, plan ahead for next year.
Every year we say we're going to start last year. We did start at the first of this year. It's, it's. Yeah.
Oh, no, I know, I know you guys try.
Don't worry, Tyler will fix that.
Well, that's the other thing, trying to get everybody in Tyler as well, trying to balance in Tyler versus the way that we've always done it. So I'm trying to do a hybrid this year for you guys. We've obviously had a lot of staff train, like turnover, which has been very difficult for us. Uh, you know, everyone wants to take vacations in the summer. That's been very difficult to try to get all, you know, these, this is a lot of people trying to get them all in one room. When they're, you know, trying to go out and spend time with their families, that's very difficult. We're hoping to strangle in this process. I wish we could get done a lot faster. I would have rather be at the budget committee meeting right now, but. It's just, it's not how it has been working. The audit's been really hard for us trying to get those numbers in the fund balance has been difficult. We have a lot of new department heads and fiscal officers that we've been having to handle and train along the way, no, to no fault of their own, but just simply teaching them. So it's just been a lot. It's very difficult to try to get all of this together.
So you've heard the options. That was the, no.
I, I still want, I, I still want a hearing.
We're going to have a hearing.
Hearing's a part of the matter what.
Well, yeah, you're going to have the hearing on, you want the hearing on the twenty third. That shoved down our throats. No.
No, I didn't say that. I said, have the hearings on the twenty third and twenty.
And the twenty fourth. Once again, two days to shove all that information down our throat. No.
My suggestion. You don't have to do it.
You would be going to the committee meetings anyway.
You're going to be going to all the committee meetings, aren't you, Tom?
Yeah, I am, but, but what about the, the other people left that want to participate?
All right, I thought we were talking about having the, uh, the hearing on the sixteenth. So we could digest the material and, you know, maybe vote about on the twenty third, but. I thought the eighth through the tenth, twelfth was the, uh, committee stuff and then the sixteenth was proposed as, uh, first public hearing day.
Does that do well, Sam?
Yeah. It's just me. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Exactly.
So that, that seems like the, not the best compromise. The different wants of hearing.
Also we'll have committee meetings eighth through the twelfth. The first public hearing will be on the sixteenth and then we will adopt and have the second public hearing on the twenty third.
Hopefully, and then if something happens, there's another Tuesday, right? I'm not, can't see, can't see.
No, no.
Well, we can have a special. Well, thirty, we can adopt it especially.
I like the idea of two public hearing. Sixteen through the twenty third and the eighth through the twelfth. I like that idea.
That's fine with me. And, and we can, um. Is it, our recorder is known or do something with the committee meetings so that the other supervisors can look at them. You know, please, just be careful. But we like it.
I'm, I'm happy with that. Mike, are you?
Yep.
Gary, are you? Aaron, are you?
That's a yes.
Yes or no? Yes or no? You're no. He always said he'd be there.
I love it.
All right, so I need clarification for the record. Committee meetings between eighth and the twelfth, first budget hearing on the sixteenth. Hang on, eighth through twelfth committee meetings. First budget hearing on the sixteenth and second budget hearing and adoption on the twenty.
Perfect.
Second public hearing. Yeah, adoption, yes.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, uh.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will return immediately.
Okay.